I didn't know you needed an answer.
Oh, no, I didn't. You look like you were having trouble hearing. That was all.
Oh, no.
Um, yeah, and I my email address is the one from whence the invitation came. So just ping me if you get booted and we'll do what we can to get you back in.
There's a title, From Whence the Invitation Came.
Yes. Mayhap, if you should get booted. Shouldst thou get booted from?
Perchance.
Perchance.
Suzie has her Christmas plant. Aaron has the traditional Christmas curtain.
Well, you draw you put on your Christmas coat.
I did.
You dressed for this meeting?
I dressed. Aaron's Aaron's just playing a loop. Have you seen those YouTube videos where they just take a picture and just run the loop?
All right, so we are live. You are ready to begin, Mayor.
All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the September eighth, two thousand or two thousand twenty City Council Study Session. Uh, let's go ahead and start with the roll call, please.
Mayor Bagley.
I would be present.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Doggo Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Pack.
Here.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, great. Then let's go ahead and start the pledge. I'll lead us off. On the count of three, or just actually approximately three. Here we go. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands.
We make.
Justice for all.
And justice for all.
I think we every week I wonder if we got it right, but. But counts. All right, then let's go on to. Uh, the computer froze there for a second. All right, any motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items? Dr. Waters, actually, I believe that you asked for a moment here, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bagley, for remembering that I asked for a moment. Um, this is not a motion to direct staff. Uh, but tomorrow is the eightieth birthday of one of our senior elder leaders in Longmont. John Shutter, uh, who came arrived in Longmont in nineteen seventy-one with his bride, his bride Bev. Uh, and spent fifty years or fifty years, spent his career in the banking business. And both while employed and post-employment, served on the hospital board, the YMCA board. He's a friend of the senior center. He's a he's a storyteller volunteer in the school district. He is the epitome of a servant leader. And so for John's eightieth birthday tomorrow, I want to offer a birthday limerick. John John Shutter, we all know is real smart. For a long month, he has shone on his part. On his birth on, so on this birthday, we just want to say we love him for the size of his heart. Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
No, thank you. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Christensen.
I thanks for that limerick. I think that was a very nice way to greet him for his birthday. It has occurred to me, we had the, uh, the Arapaho, Northern Arapaho came down and only two members of City Council were able to actually be there and the rest of us really couldn't hear what was going on. But we have sixty-seven thousand dollars in, uh, the council contingency fund. And given how, um, how devastating COVID has been particularly to, uh, First Nations people, I think it would be appropriate if, uh, our staff reached out to the Northern Arapaho to ask them if it would be helpful to them to have, say, a five thousand dollar donation to their hospital or some other, um, thing that would be helpful for them in this time. Oh, I I would like to.
I love that idea.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I guess it's a motion to direct staff to do that.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by it's been moved by Councilmember Christensen, seconded by Councilmember Pack to have staff reach out to, uh, uh, the leaders, I presume Lee Spoon Hunter, uh, of the Northern Arapaho tribe and discuss with them their their needs such as maybe monetary donation to their hospital. Um, and the the amount of five thousand dollars was suggested. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously and Harold, I've got some contact info if your people need it, okay? All right, anybody else? All right, great. Let's move on into the COVID nineteen update. You're muted, Harold. There's a little microphone at the bottom of your screen, left-hand corner, Harold. If you click it, the little red line will go away.
Okay. No, I I was throwing because I didn't know. Normally we do public invited to be heard first on this, but.
You're right, we do have public. That's a nice way of saying, Mayor, get your get your stuff together. Like, this is going fairly fast. Thank you, Marcia. All right, let's go ahead and start with public invited to be heard. Then we'll do the COVID update. How many are on the list?
Haven't opened it.
Let's open.
We haven't opened it yet.
Let's take let's take let's just take a three-minute break then and let people get online, okay? We'll be back in three. Thank you, Harold and Marcia.
You're welcome.
All right, just a reminder to our callers that, uh, if you are joining us for our public invited to be heard, please remember to mute your live stream and listen for the instructions on your telephone. Uh, I will call you by the last three digits of your telephone number and then you will be able to state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes. So I'm sure we'll get started here in just a few minutes. Just remember to mute your live stream and listen to the instructions on your telephone.
All right, how many we got?
Mayor, looks like we have three callers with us.
All right, so just so you guys know, heads up, for some reason, these funky colored lights that you're seeing in the background that I thought would be so cool for Christmas for for council. Apparently they're on my Wi-Fi and I put them all over my house and it's competing with my computer. So if if you lose me, it's because my lights are stealing my cable connection. So if I disappear momentarily, Aaron, just I'll be back. All right, um, I know that because our TVs are not going out. All right, uh, Harold, let's go ahead and hold off on you still and start with first call public invited to be heard. I'll take the time if you can start calling them in.
Excellent. So guest ending in four eight eight, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Is my microphone easier to hear?
Oh, that's easier. Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Guest four eight eight.
Okay, hello, uh, City Council. My name is Scott Cunningham and I reside at thirty-seven seventy-one South Narcissus Way in Denver. As you remember, I'm a practicing internal medicine, integrative internal medicine physician. And I've spoken to this council several times, detailing the adverse health effects of wireless smart meters. But this evening, I'd like to focus your attention on a safety issue which often carries much more immediate risk. I'm talking about the risk of electronic smart meters such as the proposed AMI meter catching fire. Now, I'll be the first to admit, I don't have an electrical engineering background as Ms. Martin does, but I'd like to share my understanding of this issue essentially from an educated layperson's perspective. My goal is to make a very complex subject understandable to all of us. I'd like to introduce you to Fire Chief Dwayne Roddy, who testified to the Michigan House Energy Committee in twenty seventeen that he watched a smart meter installed thirty-six hours earlier on his own house ignite an arc at his home from a power surge. For reasons I'll explain, the the electricity kept flowing and arcing, uh, melting the lines to his house and didn't stop until the transformer on the pole blew and then the fuse on the pole on the pole finally tripped. Fortunately, since he was physically at home at the time, he was able to intervene and prevent his home from burning potentially to the ground. Here's the inside scoop on how this smart meter fire actually started. As Chief Roddy explains, the standard time-tested analog electricity meters have very effective surge protection so that in the fourteen years that he had served the department, he had never witnessed an analog meter fire. In contrast, electronic smart meters such as the the proposed AMI meter have very weak surge protection. And when they blow, since they're installed on the outside of the house, there's no circuit breaker to stop the flow of electricity, so it continues to flow feeding the fire. If an overage comes from the power line for the power line, the building's circuit breakers can't stop the flow of power because the circuit breakers inside the building can only protect from excessive power flow inside the building. So how would Fire Chief Dwayne Roddy advise you to proceed? I believe Fire Chief Roddy's message to you would be something like this. Don't even think about installing electronic smart meters on the outside of residences and businesses. Any assurances of safety will surely ring hollow when those meters inevitably begin to fail. And when the investigations start, I'm sure that you wouldn't want people to find your name on the work order. I recommend you to proceed with extreme caution, taking the time necessary to provide the citizens of Longmont a metering system that meets sustainability needs without excessive risk of fire. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next.
All right. Guest ending in four nine nine, four nine nine, you should be able to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. This is Doe Kelly of Barberry Drive in Longmont. And, um, I have some bullet points which represent a summary of the many points that have been raised to do with the proposed smart meter rollout throughout some of the, uh, Longmont City Council public invited to be heard meetings. So starting with number one, smart meters, AKA AMI, receive and transmit information via microwave radiation at two point four five gigahertz frequency. Number two, contrary to Bill Hayes, environmental engineer with Boulder County Public Health Statements, there is considerable published science on biological harms from non-ionizing microwave radiation such as that emitted by smart meters, cell phones, cell towers, three G, four G, and fifth generation wireless, also known as five G. Number three, contrary to AMI expert Rick Schmidt's assessment, there is ample recorded evidence of smart meter fire hazards. Number four, Susan Foster of Lyons documents, firefighters in California spent fifteen years and millions of dollars fighting cell towers on their stations, having suffered harm and impairment, living and working in the presence of cell towers emitting non-ionizing microwave radiation. Number five, Susan Foster, a medical writer, initiated and assisted the medical quantifying of this impairment suffered by this specific population of people. Legal struggles around cell sightings on fire stations in California continue. Number six, Virginia Farver of Fort Collins recounts a cancer cluster at San Diego State University arising in a single dorm room from a cell tower adjacent to the dorm caused a death by brain cancer to her son, Rich, and several other unlucky victims. Number seven, Virginia Farver of Fort Collins was forced by police presence and in spite of her strong objections to have a smart meter installed on her home against her will. Number eight, a Pennsylvania court recently ruled it illegal to force residents to have smart meters installed on their homes, setting a potential legal precedent countrywide. Number nine, Longmont stands to be sued in court as health and safety issues arise with AMI as no insurance carrier will insure smart meters for liability. Number ten, smart meters and unfettered exposure to non-ionizing radiation clearly do more harm than good and it's the new asbestos. Do we, the people of Longmont, really want to spend sixteen million dollars on technology that's nearly obsolete according to Tim Sheckley and may shortly become an albatross around our collective neck? Where's the precautionary principle in all of this? And whatever happened to common sense? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last caller.
All right, Mayor, it looks like the last caller may have hung up.
Right, let's go ahead and move on to the update on COVID nineteen by Harold Dominguez.
Mayor, um, Council, we actually have Jeff Zayak from Boulder County Health here tonight to to present and on the COVID. So Jeff's on the screen now and, um, Erica, can you get his presentation ready? Or I'll let Jeff call it up when he's ready, sorry.
Thank you. Thanks, Harold. Thanks, council members. It's a pleasure to be back. What I plan to do is just walk you through the latest data that we have today, which is, um, so far looking good. It's it's a positive report and we'll see what happens in the next few days. Um, and then just talk about what we might expect over the next few days as well as, uh, what we might expect working into the the winter holidays. Next slide, please. So this is the current incidence rate on the state public health dial. Um, and it's the incidence rate, uh, per one hundred thousand for a two-week period and Boulder County is at six forty-four point nine. This was as of this morning. It gets updated twice daily. So if you went on there now, you'd probably see a different rate. Our rate has been decreasing for the last week, which is positive news. Um, uh, but again, we'll wait to see what happens throughout this next week. The next indicator is on the next slide. And this is our positivity rate. Um, and our our current positivity rate in Boulder County is six point seven percent. Um, and this is largely because of the significant amount of testing that we have in Boulder County per capita. We have a large amount of testing that's occurring. I'll show you that on a slide as we move forward. Um, but this this indicator is in the yellow. Next, next and last indicator on the state dial is the current number of days of decreasing or stable hospitalizations. Currently, we are in the yellow and this is declining in a positive trend as I'll show you when we look at our specific data. Next slide. So this is a very busy graph, but, uh, what I this is the graph that we typically share with you. It's the Metro Denny, Denver County, um, COVID nineteen new case rates and it's a seven-day moving average. And you can see that right now, um, Boulder County is actually got the lowest um, case rate, uh, among all the metro areas. Um, and we are the second lowest in the total number of new cases that we're seeing as well. This only shows the rate. Um, but if I showed you the graph on the on the number of new cases, we have the second lowest number of new cases across the metro. Again, all these are fairly positive trends. Most of these rates are decreasing. We have one in Denver um, that's slightly increasing as well as Arapaho County that's slightly increasing. Next slide. This is the total number of positives and then the total number of positives associated with long-term care facilities. Uh, as you probably all remember, early on in the outbreak of this disease, our biggest challenges with deaths, and they still are, uh, to this day, have been in long-term care facilities and that's because long-term care facilities are congregate care facilities. Um, and we know that once the disease is in, uh, the facility, it's difficult to control the spread of the disease and obviously it's affecting our most, uh, at-risk population and which ends up with unfortunately a a larger, um, death rate than our general population. Um, the positive news here is that when we do have vaccine, we already have contracts set up for strike teams to go into each of our long-term care facilities to be able to provide the vaccine. We know that the majority of these cases are coming in from asymptomatic staff that are bringing, uh, the virus in still to this day. So, um, so we do have some hope, um, and some light at the end of the tunnel here in the next couple of months. Next slide, please. This just shows our five-day average new case rate. Um, we're very happy to see it continue to go down. Um, at one twenty-eight point six, we still don't have capacity, not here in Boulder County nor at a statewide level, to be able to do the level of contact tracing or case investigation that allows us to get to the majority of these cases. Um, so we we are contacting, um, many of the secondary contacts and probable contacts via letters or electronic, um, devices at this point. Uh, and we need to get these case counts and that map. If you remember that first map I showed you is mostly all red across the state. When that map starts to turn back to yellow and green, we will be at a place where at a statewide level, um, we're in a better place to be able to do the case investigations and contact tracing. Next slide. This just shows the the relative contribution from each of our municipalities that have, uh, positive tests. You can see that, um, back in early September, Associated associated primarily with the University of Colorado outbreak, the far majority were coming from the city of Boulder that has switched. And we are seeing the largest majority now from the city of Longmont. And we've seen that for the last, approximately the last month. Next slide. This is another busy graph and what I just want to call attention to. This is our trend in two-week incidence among Boulder County residents by age group, from zero to nine, all the way up to 75-plus. And you can see that for the majority of our age groups, the rate is declining, which is what we want to see. And we hope to see that big, huge spike right in the middle is associated with the 18- to 22-year-old spike that happened when the University of Colorado brought kids back late August, early September. And the one that I want to call attention to is the one you do see increasing there. That's our 75-plus age group. And again, we know that's associated with the long-term care facilities. Next slide. This shows the breakdown of residents testing positive or who are considered probable by race and ethnicity by week. And you can see that one of our biggest challenges here is the disparity in equity that we have in the number of Hispanic Latinx population that currently is positive. And we know that this is an area that we need to continue to focus on. I want to give a thank you to Longmont for working in partnership with us to think about how we can best engage this community in decision-making and help us think about the best way to make a difference within that population. So thank you again to Longmont here. Next slide. This is the total number of tests and the total number of tests that are positive. What I just really want to illustrate here, you probably remember me talking about the number of tests that we need to do per county early on in the response. That number was 495 for Boulder County. We're consistently testing high numbers, well above 495 now. So we have a very adequate testing capacity. We have four different sites in Boulder that are drive-up sites. One of those in Longmont, one of those in Boulder, and then our two priority population sites, Nederland and Lyons. Again, want to thank Longmont here for the support around that site in Longmont. And all these sites have stayed busy and are providing access to our community in a way that's making testing as easy and free as possible. So we really appreciate the support from all of our jurisdictions. Next slide. This is our five-day positivity rate, and this is different than the one that you saw on the dial. The reason that we track five days is because we can see changes more quickly. So the one on the dial that I showed you was a two-week positivity rate. But this is a five-day, and you can see that our positivity rate is slowly dropping. We hope to see that continue. And I'll talk a little bit more about what we're expecting to see in the next week or so. Next slide. This is our hospitalizations. This is a very good trend to see, obviously. We've been in an increase in hospitalizations since the end of August. That's pretty consistently climbed throughout this last portion of the disease progression. And this has been challenging for us because, as you can see, the disease or the number of hospitalizations for COVID-19 positives is significantly higher than the highest point it was back in the early part of this disease. The good news here is that our hospitals have done a great job of being able to really figure out how to treat people who are in the hospital. So the actual length of stay in hospitals with COVID-19 positive patients now is much less than it was in the early part of this disease outbreak. So that's a good thing. Our hospitals are telling us that their biggest challenge right now is in fact around staffing of beds. The staffing that they have in their facilities, their staff are pretty burned out and are much more, have much higher turnover rate than they did early on in this disease. And I want to give a shout out here to anybody who's listening to say that, please take time to thank healthcare workers. They put themselves out there every single day to treat these folks who show up in the hospital that are coming in from our community and do the best they can to care for them. And they don't get the same level of appreciation that they did early on in this. You remember the howls that people were doing at 8:00? That doesn't happen as much anymore. So please do a shout out for our healthcare workers who are still doing their very best to keep up with this challenge. Next slide. This is the hospital surge metrics that the state is tracking. The biggest thing I want to make note of here is that we don't have any, we're not approaching surge crisis, especially for our medical beds. What we are challenged with is, sorry, I have a screen popping up on me. What we are challenged with is our ability, again, to make sure that hospitals have the staffing they need to be able to take care of the beds that they do need to be able to treat patients. And I'll just use one more example. So early on in the outbreak, when we had hospitals that were running into issues, they were having to cancel elective surgeries, reschedule them. And they're not having to do that at this point because they haven't reached that surge capacity yet. And again, the biggest issue is not necessarily the ICU availability or vent availability, but it's actually the ability to staff those beds in our hospitals. Next slide. This is the state hospitalization. And as you can see, we've got a decline there, positive trend. Next slide. This is the number of deaths. Unfortunately, what we've had is we've had 35 deaths in November and 14 deaths already in December. And this is a similar trend to what we saw early on when we saw increasing cases getting into long-term care facilities. We know that that resulted in increased deaths. We know that by and for, the largest percentage of our deaths are definitely in our long-term care facility. And that's what you see in the orange on this graph right here. It's not because those facilities haven't figured out all the prevention strategies to take. They're actually in really good places. It is that asymptomatic folks are bringing the disease in, and not every facility can test every single person every single day. So our greatest hope right now is to get this vaccine out there and get it in people's hands to start providing it to staff and people in the facilities. Next slide. This is just a graph of flu versus COVID versus hospitalizations. Really quickly, the green line is just hospitalizations that are non-COVID. So what we have right now in the hospitals is we have a lot more people that are hospitalized for non-COVID reasons. So as we increase COVID hospitalizations to that, and then if we were to increase flu with that, then it's going to put a stress again on that staffing shortage and on the beds that are available. Luckily, the blue line on the bottom that you see is flu. We have not seen many flu cases show up yet. And I want to thank everybody who took the extra effort to make sure that they got their flu shot this year because that is going to help the hospitals and help our healthcare systems. Next slide. This is, and I'm getting close to the end here. This is the social distancing that you've heard me talk about before. And Boulder County right now is at 54% social distancing. When we were, again, you can see it's compared to 86% in April when we had the stay-at-home orders in place. So we're fairly, a fairly large percentage lower than we were before. And we know that eventually, the lower that we are in social distancing, the more we know the cases will increase. And I'll illustrate that. I think it's in the next graph here. Next slide. Actually, in the next one after that. But what this, you can go back. It's okay. Go back one more. This just shows the stay-at-home index. And what the graph on the left shows is historically where we were in 2019, the amount of time that people stayed at home versus where we are right now on the right-hand side. So you can see that early on, April, May of this year, very high levels of people who were staying at home, that has dropped throughout the year to the point where our lowest point was around October. We're now starting to bring that number back up slowly. We know that this is really difficult for people right now. It's really hard to not be socializing. It's really hard to stay at home. And we know that people have COVID fatigue, and it's also critically important to controlling the spread of the disease. This next slide, I'll be able to talk about those projections. So this shows lapses in control. This is statewide current transmission control, which is what the TC is. And that's just another term for social distancing. If that stayed consistent right now with 71%, you see the black line that turns into the blue line on both those graphs. That is what our projections would look like going into the end of March, basically, if everything stays the same as it is right now. If we lapse between 10, 20, or 30%, you can see how those things spike up. So on the left-hand side, you can see that we're likely not going to exceed our hospital, total hospitalization surge platform. But what we may exceed is active ICU patients and the ability to deal with those ICU patients, depending on how much we lapse in that social distancing. So we want to be diligent and maintain this social distancing as we move forward, especially over the winter holiday. Next slide, please. And then Harold had asked for just a summary of what does it look like in terms of complaints and enforcement relative to Longmont. Longmont, I really appreciate your support and coordination. We have not had any major issues in Longmont. These are numbers for the last two weeks. If a jurisdiction doesn't show up, it's because they didn't have any reported complaints in that period of time. The primary complaints in Longmont have been focused on masking in the last two weeks and just the lack of masking in different businesses across Longmont. And again, I just want to say again how much I appreciate the partnership with each of our municipalities because the partnership is what is making the difference in keeping us focused the way that we are. And I think this is the last slide. Yep. So just to summarize, we still have an estimated 1 in 40 people statewide. This was, this prediction was as of this Saturday. They'll update this prediction again at the end of this week. But we still have 1 in 40 people statewide who are infectious COVID-19. That means that we have a lot of COVID in our communities. Our infection rates earlier on in this, so if you think back three months ago, end of spring, early part of summer, we were probably around 1 in 800. So we have a significant amount of virus in our community, which means that we have a lot higher risk of running into somebody who is infectious with the disease. We know that there's still, we don't know exactly what the percentage of people who are asymptomatic are, but we know we have asymptomatic spread occurring throughout our community. And we have a high probability that we are going to run into somebody that has the disease when we are with more than 40 people. About 16.5% of our population so far has been infected with COVID as far as the Colorado School of Public Health can tell. What we're waiting on is, we know based on Thanksgiving, we're expecting to see some more increases in those graphs that I showed you. We probably will see those today, tomorrow, the next day, through this week. We will be able to have a much better sense of what those look, what anything that had to do with Thanksgiving will actually look like. That will generate new modeling, which will help us predict where those cases may come down in the future. When you're thinking about that springtime, you saw that really February, March is when you started to see hospitalizations come down. The reason that modeling is so important is because it has an impact on schools. It has an impact on businesses. So if we can knock the numbers down and we don't see as much of a surge from Thanksgiving, that provides us with a better picture moving forward. And if we see a significant surge, obviously, it lengthens that projection out, which makes it harder for all of us. So we need people to be diligent. The School of Public Health will run some new modeling at the end of this week. So we'll have some updates. We'll share that with our municipal folks across the county. And we'll be able to have some more conversations around what does that really mean for our schools as we move forward. And finally, there is definitely light at the end of the tunnel. We do have some hope with the vaccine. The vaccine has a high effectiveness, which is very, which is very encouraging. There was concerns about if the vaccine would be that effective when the trials first started. And the numbers that we're seeing are very positive. The state is receiving their first doses next week. All regions will get some of the vaccine, but 47,000 initial doses for over 3,000 healthcare workers or 300,000 healthcare workers who are in the first priority obviously won't make a big dent. But each week, the state expects to get another shipment until we are done with all the priorities, which is roughly, roughly the middle of, the middle of, you know, June-ish timeframe. It could be sooner than that. It could be later than that. It just depends on if the vaccine gets delayed, if there's any other issues associated with it. But by the time we are through the summertime, we should be through all of the priority populations all the way down to the lowest priority across the entire state. And that's it. I know it's a lot of information, so thank you for bearing with me. I'll stop there and see if there's questions.
Councilor Christensen, sorry about that. My mouse was...
Mr. Zayak, when it says 16.5% of the population of Colorado infected, I wasn't clear whether that means that so far that is the percentage of the population that have been infected? Or is that the amount that is currently affected? Infected, I'm sorry.
That is the, that is the total percentage of the population that they're estimating has been infected at this point.
Thank you.
Dr. Waters?
Yeah, it's not for Jeff. It's for Harold. I'm still gonna, I'm gonna remain curious about, we have any data from the wastewater testing? And when would we, when would we anticipate? If we don't have it, and how could we put it to use, right? As we anticipate what's coming?
So if Jeff has time, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Dale to jump in because we've been connected with Jeff's staff. And then they connected us with the state group today. And we had a conversation earlier about our model and what we've built. And so Dale's gonna talk generally today about where we are. In our conversation in the near future, the state is hoping to have a public dashboard with that data. That'll bring, that'll bring that forward. And so today Dale will tell you what we're seeing. And it may help Jeff in terms of what Longmont's gonna look like. And then we'll start seeing the data, hopefully, in the very near future when the state makes it public. Dale, do you want to jump in?
Sure. Now's a good time. Mayor Bagley and members of council, Dale Radamaker, Deputy City Manager. Council, as you know, we have now for several months, going back to May, been participating in a collaborative effort with several other communities up and down the front range, all being coordinated through Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and Colorado State University. And Longmont has recently also sort of increased the sampling frequency here at Longmont. The program, we refer to as our wastewater surveillance program. Essentially, what we're doing is we're testing the wastewater as it comes into the wastewater treatment plant for the presence of the COVID virus. And sampling that and getting that data now on a daily basis. We were doing it just weekly, but we have now upped the sampling frequency to a daily frequency. We have also been working, I gotta give a lot of credit to Roberto Luna and Casey Campo and our staff who have began the analysis of the data. And what we are working to do is to understand that relationship of the loadings that we're seeing of the virus in wastewater versus the case counts. And we're comparing to the five-day average of new cases in Longmont. And so a great partnership again with Boulder County Health. They are providing us with the new cases that are, that are being determined in Longmont. And so we're charting that and analyzing that data. What we are doing and what the data is beginning to show us is that it does give us a fairly good indicator with about a seven-day lead, if you will. In other words, a sample taken today. a sample taken today will give us some indication of the number of cases that we may anticipate in Longmont a week from now. And what I can report is that, well, first of all, folks, this is, this is sort of like raw data and research live. And so it has not had anything near peer review or, you know, substantial verification. We are, as Harold mentioned, though, working with staff at Boulder County Health and the city of Boulder. And today we also met with folks from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Our initial feedback from all the agencies has been what we're doing here in Longmont appears to make a lot of sense. Everybody is fairly impressed with the correlation of the data. And again, by the data, I mean the number of virus load count in wastewater versus new cases. What I can tell you is that we are coordinating with the state. And as Harold mentioned, they are intending to release the dashboard. We anticipated that in the next couple of weeks. I would anticipate us then following that up with a Longmont local information because we are reaching a point where sharing this information, certainly with Boulder County Health, which we're doing and have been doing for some time, is proven to be probably helpful in trying to make decisions and to anticipate what might be coming at us a week from now. The good news that I can tell you is that we are not seeing a surge from Thanksgiving at this point. And we're about ten to twelve days out from Thanksgiving. And so as Jeff was saying, we're looking closely at the next several days this week and to see whether or not there's any spike in loadings. And so I think if there's any message from this research, it's everybody needs to stay the course. We need to all continue to do what we're doing. It does appear to be having some beneficial impact. And it is, you know, certainly not the time to let up on our, on our commitment to protecting ourselves and each other. So with that, that's the general update. We will at some point, Councilmember Waters, be in a better position to to show some of the, some of the charts and data. We're a bit reluctant to do that right now because, again, we're coordinating with our partners on the overall collaborative. But suffice it to say, we are seeing a good correlation. And it is, at this point, knock on wood, trending downward.
And I think the piece to that, if I can add something to that really quick. So when you look at it, you know, we talked about what we heard, and they said the eyeball test, it looks good. R squared is point seven. So those things really work. Longmont's a little bit different, and I think this is the challenge in this data because we don't have the industrial base that other communities have. It's easier to really get a hold of that data in terms of what it means for the community versus other communities that may have more industrial waste going into the system. To Jeff's point that he said, and this is why I said he may want to hear this, and I wanted to jump in, what I took away from this data is when I saw his graph in terms of mobility, when he sent it to me before the meeting, and I compare it to the loading, and then I see the direction that the cases are moving, it's all starting to line up. But like Jeff, I want to see what happens in the next few days to really take it through the last sort of look at this. But what's very clear is the advice they're giving when we're seeing people do it. We're seeing it in case counts, we're seeing it in the wastewater loading. And I think it's important to really be focused on the advice and how we're moving forward. And what I said is, I want to, I hope we can move through this even faster. So we get to the point where I can call Jeff and go, here's what we're seeing on the loading. We need to really hammer our communities to say we need to be diligent again because it's going to show it to us hopefully ahead of time versus waiting on the case counts. And so let us get through this week, and then I think we'll be really at the point where we're more comfortable.
Can I just follow up? Harold, you just said, you said when they, when they do it. I think what I, what I'm gonna interpret is when residents comply with the three Ws, right? Wash your hands, watch your distance, wear your mask. When we do that, that's when you're seeing the first...
Yeah. It's socially distanced and the piece of all of that because we're finding that's, that's the piece of this. And it's nothing new. Jeff's been saying this, but you can see that mobility start making its way into different data sets. Sorry, sorry, Councilmember Ferri, I just wanted to throw that in there.
You called me, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I can hear you. So I have a couple of questions. One, and it's in regard to testing. So when we look at the disparities among the Hispanic and Latinx community in case of positivity, you know, the positivity rate, how often are people, are you looking at the demographics of people who are being tested? I know for, for me, I can opt to not put my ethnicity in there. So it's kind of a, you know, you can decide whether or not to. So I understand that it might be a little difficult to keep track. But I'm wondering as far as, and this one could kind of go to Harold as well, what, one, what are we doing to help educate the Latinx community to get tested? I go every other week. We go as part, it's part of our district where we have two tests a month. So encouraging folks to go in and get tested regularly. And then for Jeff, do we have, is there any data being collected on how many in the Latinx community are getting tested?
Harold, do you want to go first?
I'll let you go first, and then I'll jump in.
Okay. So we are collecting data. As long as people are disclosing it, we're collecting data. We have done, I think, as you're aware, some pop-up testing as well. So we've gone to specific communities, really tried outreach to people. We've been using our cultural brokers. Harold can talk about the partnership that we have with Longmont and all the work that we're doing together. But obviously, the, we need to be able to engage our Latinx community as decision-makers in this, and we need to work with them to figure out what's the best way to really reach the community, provide the community with supports, have them be part of the solution with us in order for us to be successful. And clearly, from that data that I showed you on that graph, we're not there yet. We still have work to do.
Okay.
So...
Go ahead.
So we've had a couple of pop-up testing. One was near the Mobile Home Park near Quo campus. And that went relatively well. I think we had two hundred or so tests in there, and so that one worked really well. Based on where we were seeing the, they've given me access to the hotspot map throughout the community. And so we tried for a couple of weeks for a pop-up testing on Tuesdays at Lashley Street Station. That one didn't perform as well. And so what we, we looked at doing is really anchoring back on the fairgrounds testing, but then retooling, and this is the work that Marika, and she's working with Carmen Neighborhood Services and Cultural Brokers, really retooling how we're communicating within neighborhoods within our community to encourage that testing. And that's one where we probably will reach out to council to try to help us get that message out into deeper into our neighborhoods within our community because we're finding that is is an issue to deal with. What we've also learned, and I'm gonna say this is probably equally an economic demographic issue as it is ethnicity. So when I was there, and what we've heard is, I think, questions, is the testing free? But then when you get into it, it's, so what happens if I test positive? How do I pay my rent? How do I have utility bills? How do I take care of my family? And so we're trying to really work on getting that information out because my gut's telling me that there is anxiety with getting tested if you know that you can't go in and work, and then you can't take care of your family. So that's another layer that we've started talking about in terms of how we really communicate what resources are available to people so we can provide assistance if they're in that situation. And I know that's something that comes up a lot. So we're really trying to refocus our efforts and and how we engage with neighborhoods and to a certain extent, we've even talked about, you know, walking through and putting our care package, care packages, you know, indoors and things based on where we're seeing it in terms of that direct communication.
Yeah. And so, and you know, I do have a question. So were there times that the Lashley Center closed early? Because I heard on two separate occasions that they, people went out there and there was nobody around.
So...
Everything was closed.
So what I can say, I was there the first week, and we closed a line early, but we didn't close it early. And we still had people out there cleaning up after the end time was there. So I know from my perspective, when I was there the first Tuesday, they didn't. And I can double-check on the second one, but I don't think they did either then, so.
And so, you know, one of the folks, because I talked to them in person, was, you know, I just said, well, if there's nobody, you know, maybe the facility's open, but if there are no, if there aren't anybody going in to get tested, you know, you wouldn't see a lot of people. So, you know, maybe they were there, but, you know, did you circle around? Or I, I don't know. But Karen, I see you up.
So Harold and members of council, I do believe that Carmen indicated that, that that last night of testing, that they did, they did close down earlier than what they advertised because they did not have anyone there to get tested. So I can tell you the exact time, but she did mention that they closed a bit early than what they had anticipated.
Joan, your hand was up. No? All right, Councilmember Christensen?
Harold, I'm also concerned because I've, I've heard from a member of the Latino community that, well, and I also know my own personal experience, a lot of people are just worried about money because when my son and I went out to Clinica, the shot was free, but the administering of the shot was not free. So we wound up paying a hundred and fifty dollars for my son's shot, and I wound up paying, I don't know, some amount for my shot. So I think that a lot of low-income people are very worried about how much they're going to pay. And a lot of Latino families are a little larger and have extended families. So the whole family, maybe ten people, they're going in and they're worried that they can't, you know, they'll get a shot and then they'll get a big bill for something. So I, I think it would be really important to let people know the reality of how much they're actually going to be charged because I think that's a lot of the reason that a lot of people are not going in to get tested.
Is this the flu shot that you're talking about?
I'm sorry. I said shot. I meant, I meant COVID test.
Okay.
Yeah. Administering the test costs money, even though the test is free. That's what the nurse told me. So I'm just saying what the... Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah.
So, and if you, if you go to our website, if you just search Boulder County COVID-19, click on the testing link, it'll tell you which sites have an administrative fee and which don't. But if you go to the fairgrounds as an example, or the Boulder Stasio Field Drive-Up Site, completely free, no cost whatsoever. So anybody who's listening can go to either of those two sites, completely free of cost. There are some, if you go to individual providers or to a hospital, that do charge an administrative fee, but all of that is on our website and associated with each of those facilities.
This was Clinica in Lafayette, and I was led to believe that it was all free, but anyway.
Harold, you're...
Yeah, yeah. Marika is also part of the GIST in working in partnership with Boulder County Health. And so we'll make sure we push this in, and then we'll work with them to get that information out locally in terms of where, and making sure that it's also translated as we get it out in the community. You're muted, too.
I don't know what it, I swear, I unmute this thing and it just goes back to mute. So there we go. Okay. So the, so anyone else have any other questions before I ask my question? Okay. So I've taken a lot of heat for the last couple of weeks, not anymore, but last week I took a lot of heat for encouraging Weld County and businesses to back up the governor. One concern that I'm hearing from neighboring mayors is that there's going to be a four-thousand-member mega-church meeting up in Lafayette. And so they're frustrated that the Boulder County health department's not doing anything to stop that. I don't know if you can. But, and nor would I advocate you necessarily do it, but a lot of the frustration continues to be over the seemingly a lot of our small businesses, especially the restaurants, are hurting, more and more closing down. They can't hold on much longer. Part of my being vocal to Weld County was that we're doing our part. The sooner they do their part, the quicker we all get out of this. But we're doing things as a county such as that four-thousand-member meeting of people coming in. And I'm just, I have, I sometimes have a hard time defending some of our, what seems to be government decisions. What are your thoughts? How much longer can I... I'm not advocating that you shut down this, this church group. I'm advocating that we open up restaurants and figure out another way because people just are dropping left and right, restaurants, businesses, they're shutting down for good. So how do we, A, keep the COVID numbers trending downward while starting to think about providing some relief for our small businesses? Is that, are they mutually exclusive of one another or not?
Not necessarily. And thank you, Mayor Bagley, for asking that question and for the advocacy that you've done. You've been really clear that this needs to, that we need to follow these suggestions and that when we work together, we're going to be more successful. So I greatly appreciated that, and I know you've, you've taken heat over that. And what really drives, and I think everybody on this call knows, and every presentation that I've been doing, I've been talking about, nobody wants to have anything shut down. And it is, it's extremely unfortunate because we're, we're losing businesses that may never, ever be able to open up again. We're putting people into homelessness that currently weren't in homelessness. And this is completely preventable. We know that. So the message for sure that I want to get across is that if people follow those recommendations, we don't need to have any of these policies in place. We know that the behavior change will result in the positive trends that we need. We know for sure that face masks can make a significant difference. So even in the absence of more restrictive policy, wearing a face mask makes a significant difference. I hope we can all take that to heart because the policies aren't necessary unless we ignore the prevention strategies. And I don't, certainly don't want to be doing that. I know you certainly don't want to be doing that. And it puts us in a, in a no-win situation. In terms of the churches, the, I would bet that everybody's been paying attention to some of the things that are happening at the national level with churches. And the churches were recently reclassified as essential businesses by Colorado in their latest Public Health Order, which means they can operate like any other essential business. They can have indoor or outdoor gatherings. They have to maintain six feet. They have to wear masks indoors. But there's no limitation on them that's different from any other essential business at this point. And that's a huge challenge for all of us. For me, it's a huge challenge. For you, it's a huge challenge. For every community around us, it's a huge challenge. The message I would send to anybody listening to this is if you're going to go to a church gathering, I urge you and implore you to please wear a mask, maintain distance. It's safer to maintain more than six feet between family groups than it is just six feet. But if you're going to do that, please maintain the social distancing and wear a mask. It will make a difference. We are, the last thing I'll add, Mayor Bagley, is that we are working with Chief Basher in Lafayette to make sure that messaging is getting... in Lafayette to make sure that messaging is getting out. And we've been talking about that, uh, week in and week out because we have had some challenges with some of the, the faith-based churches. Um, and we want to make sure they understand the importance of this and that they get the message and that they pass that message on to their parishioners.
Have we thought about allowing restaurants to reopen with the understanding, like one household, 12 feet distancing? Is there anything we could do to allow in-person dining that would allow us to continue to see a downward trend? Has there been a discussion of that?
There has been a discussion of that, uh, at the state level. Uh, my guess is some of you are aware of that. And there, we're looking at a five-star program that Mesa put forth. The, the state health department is evaluating that program right now. Uh, I can tell you that from what I've seen from the data, what I know will be a challenge is we need to be able to have not only the ability to reduce the disease, but when we bring multiple families together and you're sitting indoors, even if you're at separate tables, without really significant separation that makes it difficult for restaurants, you can still have that virus transmit. Because if you think about it, you've got people who take their masks off. They're sitting in stationary places for longer periods of time. Um, and it's much easier to transmit the disease. So the latest Yale study, and I'm, and I'm happy to send this to any of you, or you can publish it on your website, looks at some of that specific information relative to restaurants. And that, that is a facilitated disease spread category because of those kinds of things. And that's what makes it challenging. That's why we've driven and encouraged the restaurants to do is, and I know this is not, I know how difficult this is. And I have to say, I receive calls from restaurants every single week who, who are pleading with me that they can't make it another day. And this is going to mean life or death for them. And it's their entire investment over their lifetime. So I know what this means. But that we really encourage people to do as much as they can outdoors. Much less risk outdoors, 19 to 20 times less risk when you're outdoors than indoors. Those are the safest place, places we can prevent for restaurants to be able to gather. I know that's difficult when we're talking about, um, wintertime and cold weather.
And, and, and last but not least, the one question I have is everybody here knows that when some, but when I feel attacked, I kind of react strongly. So, uh, I have a close friend who was recently fired because her employer refuses to wear masks at the workplace and, uh, she was acquainting with me. And so my question is, when you outwardly have, when you have someone who is not adhering to rules, what is the appropriate action to take?
So I think the first thing to do is what we've been doing, and this is difficult, right? If we're talking about individual to individual situations, there's a lot of those things that happen and we're not going to be able to deal with every single one of those issues. What we're looking for is trends. So as you, I think, as you know, we have an entire business team that's set up around where we're hearing lots of complaints about businesses, people not masking. We're doing tons of education. That's a partnership with all of you and each of other, our other municipalities. The best thing you can do, if it's an individual to individual situation, is separate from the person. If it's an employer who is not following guidelines, those are the things we definitely want to hear about and we will do follow-ups with, um, to make sure.
That there, there are, I am aware of employers who are letting people go who vocalize that they, that they need to be compliant with the governor's orders. People are losing their paychecks, uh, because they're scared that these people will turn them in. And so, uh, I, it's time to start turning them in.
Yeah, those are things that need to come into the business group and, in Boulder County Health, and then they, they partner with jurisdictions on this. You all may have seen it on, there's several that were, um, on the newspaper, in the newspaper today where that's yeah, well, and we work with them.
Like you said, usually it's like, I know we're all trying to get along, but when people are, people are starting to do stupid, mean things. And so I'll be stupid and mean back. So.
Uh, Mayor, I wanted to also add.
Go ahead, Harold.
I wanted to add something to Jeff and the five-point program. We've also asked Jessica. So she's been involved in that conversation because she's partnered, and I forgot the name of the business. It's actually designed a more, a more robust certification program that, um, in, in their review of it, and Jeff, we need to probably get you tied into this. Based on what? Yeah, HQ. And, and so I know they're trying to talk about that a little bit because they think it's a little more robust than what Mesa did. And so I know those conversations have been forwarded to the governor's office as well.
Yep. Jessica did send those. Um, so thank you again for partnering with us there too, that did get into the governor's office with the encouragement that they take a look at that program.
Um, and then, um, Mayor Council, I just wanted you to know that based on what we were seeing in conversations that Jeff and I had in terms of critical infrastructure and all of these issues, um, what we were seeing internally, just to know what we did. You know, obviously I've said we're really enforcing masking in those issues. But to the point of this, basically said, if there's not a reason for someone to be within six feet of each other, you don't need to do it. And if they're really the only reason we should be within six feet of each other is if there's an emergency issue that we need to deal with, water leak, wastewater leak, those types of issues. And so we've even been more focused just based on the cases we've seen in our organization in terms of saying, don't be near each other. Be six feet away.
Dr. Waters?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Bagley. Um, Jeff, any advice, uh, for us or for members of the public on the apps that, um, that are available to monitor our own proximity to others who, either have been infected or where outbreaks have occurred?
Absolutely. And I, I can't believe it, but I'm completely spacing the name of the app that you put on your phone that will tell you, um, if you've been exposed to somebody, um, that is close to you that has COVID. And what it does is it does not collect any personal identifying information. I don't know the technology behind it. There's, there's a ton of information on the state's website about it. Harold, I hope you're looking it up for me because I can't believe I've spaced the name of it. But, um, but there is an app that you can download on your phone. I've downloaded it online as soon as I heard about it. What happens is if you get in close contact with somebody who is a probable or known positive, then you get a, a text message that comes to you that provides you with uh, explanations of what you can do as next steps. And the reason that's important, especially now, so thank you for bringing this up, Dr. Waters, is because we know we can't contact trace and do case investigations with everybody. So this is another way for people to get a notification if they've potentially been exposed and is a, a very positive thing.
All right. Councilmember Christensen and Council, Councilmember Dogal Ferring, and then Councilmember Martin.
Thanks. Um, Jeff, I, uh, someone wrote in today with what I thought was a good suggestion. And of course, because we won't be getting the vaccine, uh, most of us for quite some time. So that's very frustrating. But anyway, one thing that we could do in conjunction with this app that you just mentioned is if people get the vaccine, they would be given a little certificate that they can show. And then we can let those people go to restaurants and bars to, and be assured that, uh, we can begin to open things up as people get vaccinated because their entrance to be able to go to a restaurant or a bar would be their certificate of vaccination. Do you think that's a good idea?
Uh, I will definitely float the idea. I think the tracking is going to be the hardest thing to deal with. So if you think about the number of vaccinations that need to go out across all of the communities across Colorado and how we actually coordinate and track all that, um, and then make sure that the person who's in the restaurant, who gives them the certificate, I bet there's a lot of operational issues with that, but I will, I will definitely float the issue and bring it to the state as well. And just see if anybody has thought about this or talked about this yet.
Thank you.
Suzie, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dogal Ferring.
You're good.
And Councilmember Martin.
I found it. So COVID-19 dot Colorado dot gov, exposure dash notifications. Um, add your phone is the other way that you can access it. I have it on my phone. That's why.
Thank you, Suzie.
You're welcome.
And the key piece on that is when, when you get a test result, if it's positive, there's a section in the app where you can upload your result. We had this question on our staff. Basically, depending on the age of your phone, it uses a Bluetooth technology in terms of proximity, but it doesn't keep track of, doesn't track you. There are some older phones that does, it does use location services, but it also doesn't track. We sent this information out to our community, we were, to our organization. I'll have Sandy send it to you with a technical article that goes over that.
All right. I'm going to keep, let's take these last couple of comments and then just going to remind everybody nicely that we still have four huge issues to get through tonight. Uh, Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, actually that was the same thing. I had found it before Councilmember Christensen spoke. And it's, uh, uh, the other thing people should probably know is that if you have an iPhone, you don't need to install anything. You just have to enable your Bluetooth. And, uh, it can be frustrating if you, if you have an Android phone. Harold's going, yeah, it can. Um, but, uh, that's what it's called. The, it doesn't really have a catchy name. It's just called exposure notifications.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Um, this goes to Councilwoman Christensen and Jeff Zeuck. Um, I just saw on the news that, uh, Google and other, uh, big platforms are creating an app that once you get the vaccine, you fill in the app and it will give you a green screen that you hold up to go into any, uh, any event, any restaurant, et cetera. So that might be more worth looking into. And then nobody has to question anybody. You just hold up your phone that you've had the vaccine.
Thank you. Thank you. I will look into that for sure.
All right. Jeff, thank you very much for your continued work. Um, I don't know if you signed up when you first started this job, if you ever thought you'd be doing this kind of crap. But, uh, earning your money, my friend, earning your money. So thanks for your help.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thanks, councilmembers.
All right. Next, let's go ahead with the Front Range Passenger Rail presentation. Joan.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Peck, no complaining about the rail. Okay. We're going to talk about it. I know you hate it, but we're going to talk about it. By the way, I'm being sarcastic. I know.
I know you are. Hi, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council. Phil Greenwald, Transportation Planning Manager with the City of Longmont. Just wanted to, uh, quickly get to the Front Range Passenger Rail, um, presentation here by Randy Grobberger. Uh, this is some pretty positive news for, um, passenger rail along the whole front range and, and also includes a bit of our Northwest Rail corridor. So I invite, uh, Randy to take it away. Thank you very much, Randy.
All right. Thank you, Phil. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I appreciated Phil, uh, inviting me quite a while back. And, uh, told him we're always anxious to get the word out about Front Range Passenger Rail. So uh, thank you for this opportunity. Again, I won't have as many bar graphs and probably as much interesting, uh, information. I was fascinated by, uh, all of the good trends that Jeff was talking about tonight. And, and, uh, I just encourage us all and you do the same to keep wearing those masks, folks. All right. Uh, next slide, please. Okay. Southwest Chief and Front Range Passenger Rail Commission. I'm the, I'm Randy Grobberger and I am the Project Director for the Commission. I was hired for this position, uh, almost two years ago. Now, uh, the commission itself was created by the state legislature in 2017. These are the 11 voting members. Uh, the top ones are the 11 voting members of the commission. Then we have three non-voting members. As you'll see, uh, both railroads, uh, Class 1 railroads in Colorado are members of the commission. DJ Mitchell, uh, BNSF Railway. DJ is actually the Vice President of Passenger Rail Operations for the entire BNSF Network. So we're extremely fortunate to have, uh, DJ, uh, on board as one of our voting commissioners. Also, we have representatives from each one of the Front Range MPOs. Uh, we have, uh, a couple of individuals in the southern part of the state uh, because half of the commission's charge is to continue to work with Amtrak and the BNSF to make sure that Amtrak's long-distance train between Chicago and, and Los Angeles, the Southwest Chief, that that, uh, train remains in southeastern Colorado and, and continues to flourish. Bill Van Meter with RTD, uh, is another one of the, uh, voting members of the commission. We have three non-voting members, David Crutzinger. He's the head of the Division of Transit and Rail at CDOT. Rob Eaton, uh, with Amtrak as a non-voting member, and then Dale Steenburgen, uh, one of your neighbors up north in, in Cheyenne, with the Cheyenne Chamber is also a non-voting member. Next slide, please. These are the commission's purposes for existing. Basically, again, that legislation in 2017 said that the commission should continue to, uh, preserve Southwest Chief service in the southern part of the state. And then the last bullet and the most significant probably to you folks is the facilitation of the development of Front Range Passenger Rail. The legislation called for Front Range Passenger Rail to exist between Pueblo and Fort Collins, which is about 180, 180-mile corridor by highway. Next slide. Why the renewed interest in passenger rail? I mean, there have been studies done for many, many years up and down the front range and across the state for passenger rail. But the real reason that it really makes sense now is the incredible population changes. As this slide shows, uh, these stacked, uh, counties show how much growth there's going to be along the front range, uh, over the next, um, between 2018 and 2050. As you can see, all of the growth will, not all, but certainly the predominant amount of growth in the, in the state of Colorado over the next 30 years will occur in this 180-mile corridor. Next slide. Here are some of the reasons that the commission was charged with implementing Front Range Passenger Rail. Anybody that drives I-25 knows that congestion is simply getting worse. Uh, travel time is increasing and certainly is becoming less predictable. I live up in Johnstown and before COVID, I was commuting to downtown Denver every day. Forty-three miles, uh, each way. And my travel time was anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half for that 43-mile trip. And, and that's one of the beauties of passenger rail, a well-run passenger rail system. You can almost set your watch by uh, when the train arrives and when it arrives at your destination. State's population, we already touched on that, uh, has grown significantly over the last 30 years and it's going to continue to grow. Fort Collins to Pueblo currently has 84% of the state's 5.6 million folks. And that corridor itself will gain 84% of the additional 3 million residents, uh, by 2050. And just imagine another 3 million residents wanting to use that one additional lane that CDOT is currently adding to I-25. We don't think that's going to get it done. We're, we're pretty concerned about the, the average travel time, uh, especially if you're not paying the, the toll to be in those managed lanes. Population 65 and over is increasing. Uh, I certainly resemble that remark. And, uh, I'm understanding that, you know, the older I get, the less I like to be on I-25. And, and I think a lot of, of, of our older folks are feeling the same way that I do. We had a really interesting conversation with some folks in, in Adams County several months ago now. They had just interviewed a very, uh, high-powered Fortune 500 company that was considering moving to Adams County. At the end of the day, they said, no, we love Front Range, Colorado. We like everything you've got here, except you don't have passenger rail. And our employees are used to riding trains and we're going elsewhere. Uh, so we're afraid that that kind of thing might be occurring up and down the front range. And obviously jobs and economic development are critical. And the younger population, I'll tell you, when I turned 16, it was the rite of passage. I finally got my driver's license. Now you're finding out that some kids aren't even interested in getting their driver's license. They'd rather uh, ride transit and sit on their phone or sit and play with their phone or text their friends or, or listen to their, uh, headphones. So it's an entirely different world than the old, well, we're out west and, and we all love our cars. That's, that's starting to change pretty rapidly in Colorado. Next slide, please. We did an online public meeting, uh, a survey that was up 24/7 for the entire month of July, this past July. And we, I'm going to touch here on a few of the questions that we asked in that, in that, uh, survey. We had 10,000 people responded to the overall survey, uh, which was quite amazing. The consultant team that put this up said they had never seen this kind of response to a, a one-month survey. Uh, but as you can see through this pie chart, we asked, what are the most important operational considerations to you for a Front Range Passenger Rail system? Station location, close to my origin and destination. That made a lot of sense, as do these others. Station location close to my origin and destination. That made a lot of sense, as do these others. The second, at almost 19%, was the ability to interconnect with other modes of travel, either currently or planned in the future. Reasonable travel times ranked very high. Affordability of cost was very high. And then the last larger number was shifting people from their cars to reduce congestion. Next slide. One of the other questions was, where would you most want the alignment of Front Range Rail to go? And in this particular question, they were only given these three options. Downtown Denver, the airport, or Denver Tech Center. And as you can see, downtown Denver was the obvious choice. A lot of people say, well, there's a lot of people wanting to go to the airport. And I say, yeah, but the people that are wanting to go downtown Denver, a lot of those are commuting and they're going there five days a week. Some of the people that would love to have this train go from Fort Collins or Longmont to the airport, maybe only go out there three or four times a year. So obviously, the downtown Denver focus is not surprising in this 180-mile corridor. Next slide. This was an interesting one. What would be your most primary purpose for using Front Range Passenger Rail? Recreation leisure again was almost twice as high as the second highest, which was commuting. But once again, keep in mind, the commuters are probably on that train five days a week and the recreation leisure people might be on there two to three times a month. So the fact that there's twice as many people that voted for that particular recreation leisure column, there still will be a lot more commuters overall on this train making up the total ridership numbers when this line is, and this Passenger Rail network is opened up. Next slide. This is just a listing of some of the, the, again, the people that said, where do you most want to go? And again, there's no surprises. It's the predominant destinations and attractions, Denver, the airport, Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, Boulder, and, and on down the line. So again, this, this particular question didn't surprise any of us. Next slide. We had done a couple previous surveys back in 2019. Again, this one, the previous one that I just discussed was in, in July of this summer. But these two were done last year. We did a Metro Quest survey. This was handing out cards and having people go online and complete a survey. Almost 7,000 people responded to this over a two-month period. 95% of the respondents believed that Passenger Rail Service could help address the transportation needs up and down this front range corridor. And 92% said they'd be interested in using it when it becomes available. Then in October, the Rail Commission engaged a couple of the most high-powered political consultant polling companies in the state, one on the Republican side, one on the Democratic side. We didn't want to have this balanced and or unbalanced in any way. They did 600 telephone surveys across 13 Front Range Counties from October 4th to October 8th. In order to participate in the survey, you had to indicate that you were going to be potential voter in the October, excuse me, in the November 2020 election. This again came up with some incredibly surprising numbers. 81% of the folks contacted indicated that they had support for a Front Range Passenger Rail Service that would provide regular train service daily between Fort Collins and Pueblo. And we asked the tough question. None of these others had ever mentioned money. So we ask a question, would you support or oppose a sales tax increase to fund a Front Range Passenger Rail Service project that would have regularly scheduled service to these population centers with an estimated cost of $5 billion? 61% said they supported it. Only 27% said they opposed. The pollsters that did this, Magellan and RBI Strategies, they said they were shocked by these numbers and they said the Commission was in an excellent position to begin, begin this project. Next slide, please. We have done, over the past several months, we've been doing ridership modeling. And the modeling that we've been doing projects that there'll be a very notable demand for, for this service. Again, the demand appears to be highest amongst commuters and that was significantly aligned with the recent survey we did this past summer. But that substantial demand for recreation and special events, special events are things like the Stock Show, like Rockies Games, the State Fair down in Pueblo, CSU and Boulder Football Games, CU and CSU, Air Force Academy, et cetera. Those are special events that are categorized into the, into the travel model. And again, these numbers that we're coming out with in Colorado, and I've got a couple of slides here to show you in a second, that they fare comparably well with other rail lines across the country. And absolutely, the, the trains will create a reduction in emissions and fit nicely into the governor's air quality goals for the state of Colorado. Next slide. This is the, the ridership numbers for one of three alignments that we still have in contention and one of those happens to run right down through the middle of Longmont. The BNSF line, Class One freight line that begins up in, in Fort Collins, comes down to Longmont through Boulder into Denver and all the way into Pueblo. So that continues to be one of, one of our routes. That line is actually 191 miles of railroad. In the year 2050, there will be 7 million people along that line. We projected out the full vision of this operation and it would be 25 round-trip trains a day operating on double-track exclusive rail through the corridor with 14 stations between Pueblo and Fort Collins. Annual ridership, nearly 3 million riders per year. We're about 9,200 riders on a average weekday. Again, we normally do model runs with only 10 stations, but this particular one, we used 14 stations. And that included some secondary stations in Fort Carson, Monument, Louisville, and Bertha. And when we do the additional four stations, some people thought by adding that additional station stop time, we might lose ridership. No, the model says we would actually increase ridership by adding those four additional stations. Next slide. This is a listing of some of the other comparable Passenger Rail systems around the country that we compare this proposed service to. As you can see, there's a service between Chicago and Milwaukee known as Hiawatha. They don't even carry a million riders a year and they think that's successful enough that they're currently adding additional trains to that line. The Capital Line from, from San Francisco out to Sacramento, that's about 168-mile route. Carries a little less than the projected ridership for this Colorado train. We've got a neighbor to the west of us, the frontrunner over in Salt Lake City. That's a very successful train that operates through Salt Lake up to Ogden and, and down to Provo. And again, they're carrying close to 5 million riders on, on that particular service with 28 round trips per day. Next slide. These are the alignments that are still in contention as we're wrapping up this first consultant contract. We've got a couple more consultant teams to be brought onboard next year to complete the service development planning and start doing the modeling that would be required by the Federal Railroad Administration and the railroads themselves in order for us to operate passenger trains in the adjacent corridors to the Class One freight railroads. So we've got two lines. The, the blue line is the BNSF line that I mentioned that goes through Longmont. The yellow line is actually the line that we evaluated back in 2014. I was the project manager for that study for the consultant firm at that time and Phil Greenwald was one of my superstars on the Technical Advisory Committee for that. But that line started again in Fort Collins, came down to Longmont and then went out to the I-25 corridor, connecting down to eventually to RTD's North Metro Line, which just opened up this past September. The purple line is the I-25 corridor alignment. That one does not penetrate downtown Denver, but instead when it hits the north suburban and, and south suburban areas, it heads east out to the airport in the I, or the E-470 corridor. And then it proceeds south along I-25 all the way to Pueblo. So these are the three that we've been evaluating over the past 15 months and, and we're anticipating it'll be these three alignments that enter into NEPA. They're all technically feasible. They obviously have different benefits and impacts. But those, those particular routes will be studied in much more detail over the next, probably the next 15 to 18 months. Next slide. Now, this is an exciting slide here. We were, the Commission was presented with a, an overview at their August meeting from, from our Amtrak representative on the Commission about a new program that Amtrak is including in their federal reauthorization proposal. It's called a Network Modernization Program. And what it will be would be to create a $25 billion, $5 billion a year national program to create new short-distance corridors. And by short distance, we're talking about corridors less than 400 miles in length. The Amtrak officials have, have identified the Colorado Front Range Corridor as their top priority in the nation for this new program. And they have already cleared the House of Representatives, has, has approved this. They're awaiting companion legislation in the US Senate to, to get this program underway. I don't know if a lot of you have heard, but the new President-elect Joe Biden is referred to in a lot of circles as Amtrak Joe. So everybody believes that Passenger Rail is going to be at the top of his priority list in terms of some of his agenda for the next four years. So that's pretty exciting. But to have Colorado as the number one list on this, this particular program is exciting. Amtrak has indicated they have targeted $2 billion, 2.1 actually billion dollars for infrastructure improvements and rolling stock for three, three trains a day service between Fort Collins and Pueblo. They're proposing a train leave Pueblo and, and Fort Collins in the morning peak, another one over the noon hour, and then another one in the evening peak. So this is exciting and we're pretty, pretty sure that a $2 billion payment from the feds and that, by the way, is 100% federal funding. There is no state match required for this new grant program. But we think that'd be a pretty exciting down payment for the future build-out of Front Range Passenger Rail. Next slide, please. Okay, this is getting close to the wrap-up. Again, we think that Front Range Passenger Rail has an incredible amount of momentum been developed over the past 15 months. We've got three different surveys showing substantial local support for, for the system up and down the front range. Legislative and local elected interest. We've got a lot of folks involved in what we call segment stakeholder coalition meetings. We met four times in, in the past 15 months. The next meeting of these groups will probably be in, in February. But they're basically opportunities for the public to provide a lot of input in terms of alignment, in terms of station locations, in terms of service levels, environmental impacts, all those kinds of things. Amtrak, as, as I just mentioned, is extremely interested in the Colorado Front Range, as are our Class One Railroad Partners. We meet about every six weeks with BNSF and UP. And now having DJ Mitchell at the table is, is just a real shot in the arm for, for the Commission. And other potential partnership opportunities. We're having pretty regular meetings with Bill Van Meter and his staff at RTD talking about the potential for the Northwest Rail Corridor from Denver to Boulder to Longmont being the first usable segment of a Front Range Passenger Rail build-out. And to sit down with, with Bill Van Meter and his staff and DJ Mitchell at the same time and have those conversations is, is pretty exciting. Bill Van Meter has even indicated that once his new board is seated and, and their new general manager gets her feet on the ground, he is trying to host some type of virtual dinner or happy hour or whatever, where his, his board and the Rail Commission can get together and spend a couple hours getting acquainted and, and trying to further these partnerships. Next slide. Oh, that's it. All right. Well, I ran through that kind of quickly. I know your first couple of agenda items tonight were really interesting and, and took a bit of time. So I didn't want to take too much of your time this evening, but I'm certainly available for, for any questions that you might have.
I just, I just want to say before we start the questions, just something to keep in mind, me personally, just, I'm sure you're aware of the RTD FastTrax situation from Denver to Longmont.
Absolutely.
Feel free to share with them that it sounds to me like you're, you're talking about a hell of a good matching fund or some type of down payment that would go a long way to us getting Northwest Rail. And you can call, and if they decide to call this one and the same, keep in mind that Longmont currently pays four, five, four to five million dollars a year to have rail service from Denver to Longmont. And so that should be money that, that if we're going to continue to pay it, that should go towards rail. And if you and others are going to come in and build that rail, I would want to see our tax dollars going to help this project rather than pay RTD, get nothing from RTD, and then have another tax to pay this rail, you know? So the only thing worse than paying for no rail is paying for, you know, no rail twice or double paying for rail, if that makes sense. So just, just as you're talking in these meetings, know that I think I speak for all of council that we want our rail. We, we love hearing what you're saying. And that RTD needs to contribute funding to this project, should indeed it go from Denver to Longmont, which, again, speaking for this council, we would really ask that be pushed. But anybody else have anything to say other than that? Because I tried to hit it on the head. Councilman Peck?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, Randy, thank you. That was a great presentation and it's really, really exciting to see these projects moving forward. And so my question is, what can we as a council do to further your interest in using the Northwest Rail over those other two lines that you're looking at? Do we need to move faster on getting the Northwest Rail ready as far as getting projects going? Do we need to get a, an analysis done? Tell us what we need to do to show that we're ready and that we, we want to be part of this project.
Okay. Well, Phil does represent you on the segment coalition, stakeholder coalition meetings that I talked about. Again, we meet about quarterly, every three to four months. Our next meeting, we're expecting to be sometime in February. That is really where the local support and, and local voices can be heard. Certainly, any kind of letter-writing campaign, you know, to the Commission or to your legislators. We're actually going to be getting out and the Commission is going to be sending out pretty much personalized letters. So it'll probably, your letter will probably come from Jacob Rieger, who is, is the staff at Dr. Cog that is, is your Commission representative. But those letters will be going out before the end of the year, basically asking locals to consider contacting if you have lobbyists or, you know, if, for the MPOs, they certainly do have lobbyists. I don't know if Longmont does, but these letters will be encouraging you to contact your, your state-elected officials. We expect in this next session that Senator Leroy Garcia, President of the Senate, will once again be running a bill to create a Front Range Passenger Rail District. We're pretty sure that when this project eventually goes to the, to the voters for funding, we can't imagine that we'll be asking people out on the fringes of the state to pay for it. It seems logical to follow what some other states and communities have done and that would be, you know, ask the people that are adjacent to the line and that would more likely use the line the majority of the time. Probably folks out in Sterling and up in Craig and down in Durango and those in Lamar probably aren't going to get a lot of votes from them. And, and obviously, the way we have to do things in Colorado, you need to pass an election to generate some of the revenue. Again, we believe we're going to get a lot of funding from the feds. We've received these two federal planning grants recently. And the state of Washington was on this same track several years ago. They're now receiving a lot of federal funding for capital and equipment following the partnership that they created with the Federal Railroad Administration years ago. So we believe there will certainly be some state funding involved, but we know we would like to get all the federal dollars that we can get our hands on for these types of projects. And for this initial $2 billion, 100% federal Amtrak grant that is, is, you know, Amtrak is running around the country giving PowerPoint presentations telling everybody that they're chasing Colorado for the first $2 billion of this. And, and that's awfully exciting. I heard from Amtrak's representative on the Commission just two days ago that they intend to have the new president and CEO of Amtrak come out and meet with the Commission and the governor in February to announce this program. And I said, the sooner you can get out here with that kind of news, I think the Denver Post is looking for some positive headlines instead of everything that's been so negative over the past several months. And so I said, get your butts out here as quick as you can, please. We need to hear that. Uh we need to hear that and the and the governor needs to hear it and and there needs to be a a very nice press conference announcing that type of of program for the state.
So another question, um what kind of timeline are you looking at? Uh for at least, are you going to do it in segments or all at once?
Um this project probably works best by doing it in segments and and using again the Class One Railroads. That's how almost every other uh system around the country, those in the Pacific Northwest, those in Utah, those in New Mexico, those in California. Other than the high-speed rail, you know, project in California, that's an eighty billion dollar project with a lot of greenfield construction. We just don't envision that taking place. The Colorado Front Range is already so developed. That uh we believe the the best solution right now uh moving into NEPA is to suggest partnering with the Class Ones. Starting with six to eight to ten trains a day, building up ridership over time. Building up pots of money over time to to eventually build out that, you know, twenty four trains a day, round trips a day on double track. Uh dedicated uh right away and track dedicated for the passenger rail services.
Okay, and one more question before I let you go. Um just out of curiosity, is Amtrak looking to a kind of evolve in the in the in the way? Uh the country is going or the other parts of the world in getting away from uh diesel-fueled engines? Or is it still going to be the diesel fuel?
No, uh DJ Mitchell, in fact, is a strong proponent. About every six weeks I hear from DJ, he says, you remind the stakeholders up and down this corridor. That by the time, you know, this train is in operation and it's going to take five years, you know, at a minimum to to see these trains operating under the best scenario, probably five to ten. But DJ is strongly convinced that that uh battery-powered locomotives will be operating not only the. Uh passenger trains around the country, but also their freight trains. And that's very exciting news.
That's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Randy.
You bet. Thank you.
I'm muted, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Christensen and then Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Randy. This was a wonderful presentation and it's.
Thank you very much.
It it's very exciting to see that Amtrak, which has been kind of. More, much more interested in its freight for the last decade, is actually excited about this, willing to put money into it and understands how much this leads to. Prosperity for our region, uh for both commuters and tourists. I've traveled all over the world without a car and I've done it on trains and, you know. It's much easier. Um and uh so uh. And it would lead to all, an incredible amount of infrastructure investment and uh jobs, good jobs. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is really exciting. Um I uh, so I would move that as a council, we. Draft that um staff draft a letter in uh letters to our. United States Senators and Representatives and also to our state representatives uh in support of this, in support of this program. Do I have a second?
A second that. I think, I mean, I think that, I think that uh we should also add on there RTD.
Yes.
With with uh outlining some of the concerns I raised previously, um encouraging the project and asking them to, you know, get behind it. So uh.
I agree.
You know, all in favor, say aye.
Um I, 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 can I add something to that?
Sure, go ahead, Joan. We're sorry.
Along with uh RTD, do you think, and I'm not sure, do you think we should add our lobbyists on there as well, who were, will be going to Washington to lobby for us? Like commuting solutions, NADA, um.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I, yeah, I think, I think that Phil, I think we should just, I think what's best is Phil could just come up with a list and get the letter to him. You know, um having been to Washington DC several times with Phil and seeing his, you know, expertise in action on this particular topic. I have full faith he'll be able to figure it out. So basically, the motion is to uh write our our elected representatives at all levels. Um uh expressing our support of of the Southwest Chief slash Front Range Rail. Um all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Uh Mr. Grauburger, thank you so much. That was awesome. Councilmember Martin? I see you. Go ahead.
Okay, that was my hesitation about seconding the motion is that's, there's my question. Um, Mr. Grauburger, um. You said that there would be a phased implementation. And uh as you know, Longmont had has a bad taste in its mouth about phased implementations because we were the last phase. Um, what criteria do you expect will be used to determine the ordering of which phases will be built? Uh at which points and um is there anything that uh? Uh a municipality can do to uh improve the odds of being in an early phase?
Well, the early modeling numbers that we've done in terms of ridership, the Longmont, Boulder, Denver link is the heaviest ridership in the entire corridor. Uh the next highest is probably uh down to Colorado Springs and then from Longmont on up to Fort Collins. Uh but again, the um there are opportunities, I would say, uh just because of the existing infrastructure. Uh that's there uh from Fort Collins to Longmont to Boulder to Denver. Uh that it appears would be the simplest piece to add the appropriate sightings to allow six to eight passenger trains today to operate. Uh, you know, adjacent to and in with mixed traffic with the with the Class One operation right now. We've also engaged both UP and BNSF in in some opportunities to uh consider. Uh sort of revising their freight operation uh norm uh in the northern part of the state. Uh if that can truly happen, uh we can't discuss many details of that yet. I think Phil Greenwald has has heard a a few of the. Of the possibilities there and and we're hoping that there'll be some announcements in the next three months that could literally be game-changing. Uh types of things for uh for communities in the North Front Range uh through some cooperation with both Class Ones. So uh we're holding our breath that that these negotiations continue and and um are just kind of. You know, I'm giddy about, you know, what this would actually mean to uh to you folks and your neighbors to the north and and up and down the front range. Uh, you know, for, not only for passenger rail, but just for the livability of your communities.
That's very encouraging news. Thank you, Mr. Grauburger.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your your offer to write these letters. I mean, and I will let the commission know. You know, about your reaction to this call tonight. And I think that'll put some wind in their sails in terms of these letters and and we'll say that Longmont is sort of taking the lead. Uh in terms of this advocacy for for the project and and I guarantee you, there'll be some other communities wanting to uh follow suit. So I really appreciate your leadership on this this evening.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Grauburger.
Okay, all right. Thank you much.
All right. How long, uh, let's only how long, uh, we might want to take a little bit of a break. Uh depending on how long the update on the two nineteen greenhouse gas inventory and climate action task force recommendations is going to take. I assume somebody on staff has a, yep.
So, um Mayor Bagley, members of council, Annie Noble, Environmental Services Manager. Um I estimate it will take about twenty minutes.
Right, let's go through that then.
Three items and Lisa will be teeing them up.
All right, let's go ahead and do it then.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of council. I'm Lisa Knobach, Sustainability Program Manager with Public Works and Natural Resources. And tonight we'll be discussing three items with you, all of which are related to climate action. Uh first of which is the twenty nineteen greenhouse gas inventory. And then we'll be discussing the evaluation and prioritization of the Climate Action Task Force recommendations. And then finally, the solar feasibility study, uh which was first conceived by wastewater treatment staff to offset peak loading and then was expanded to. Look at all publicly publicly owned properties in Longmont. So I really just want to acknowledge those folks at the wastewater treatment plant uh for taking that initiative. Uh we'll be seeking direction from council specifically on the modifications and implementation of the Climate Action Task Force recommendations. And before I hand it off to staff to jump into those presentations, I just want to inform you that we had planned on bringing back the, bringing the equitable carbon-free transportation roadmap to council in December. Uh but that process has taken longer than we anticipated. Um but we do plan to have that finalized and brought back to council uh in the first quarter of twenty twenty one. So I just wanted to uh inform you on that. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Francie Jaffe with the Sustainability Team to get into the greenhouse gas inventory.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Um Mayor Bagley, member of city council, and Francie Jaffe, water conservation and sustainability specialist. I believe I have a presentation um that should be shared. Thank you. I'm next. So I'm going to start off my presentation with the update to the twenty nineteen greenhouse gas inventory next. As a reminder, the sustainability plan directs city staff to update the inventory every three years from a twenty sixteen baseline. After we completed the twenty sixteen baseline, a target of reducing uh greenhouse gas emissions by sixty six percent by twenty thirty was established. And the city uses the internationally recognized GPC protocol to determine our greenhouse gas emissions. Uh the GPC protocol uses the unit metric tons carbon dioxide equivalent. This combines carbon dioxide, methane, and nitrous oxides, three greenhouse gas emissions into one unit. For context, one metric ton of carbon dioxide equivalent is about a hundred thirteen gallons of gasoline. Next slide. So over the next couple of slides, I'm going to highlight some key findings, starting with overall twenty nineteen greenhouse gas emissions. And then we actually focused a little bit more in depth on waste for twenty nineteen, so then I'll end with diving deeper into our waste analysis. Next. So this is a overview of the twenty nineteen emissions by sector. Our um largest sector is residential, commercial electricity, followed by commercial and residential natural gas. Combine these four categories make up about seventy, ninety, eighty percent of our emissions coming from our buildings. After that, the next la- largest sector is on-road transportation that includes cars and buses. I do want to note that we have a number of different sectors, agriculture, industrial processes and procedures, oil and gas wells, that are all under one percent. So for the next slide, I'm just going to remove that for for clarity. Next. So this is the same pie chart, but we're bringing in additional equity share emissions. That additional equity share emissions represents the percentage that the city of Longmont owns of what Platte River Power Authority is selling on the market. Um this is not usually included in the GPC protocol as um the energy is being used by other communities. But we wanted to include it as informational item of both um the emissions from what is used in the city of Longmont as well as own that's sold to other communities. So in total, with adding this in, uh emissions from electricity come to about sixty five percent. Although I do want to note that this was done in twenty nineteen and since then, we've seen about a twenty percent increase in renewable energy we use, being used. For our electricity supply. So when we do our next greenhouse gas inventory update in twenty twenty two, we should see a more significant decrease in our electricity emissions. Next slide. When comparing twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, we saw a eight percent decrease in total emissions and a twelve percent increase in per capita. This is due for two reasons. Uh one is activity. We saw increased waste diversion as well as a closure of oil and gas wells, but probably the bigger impact was due to methodology. As you can see on this slide, there's a significant decrease in air travel. This was primarily due to how the Denver Airport is allocating emissions to different communities. Uh doing greenhouse gas inventories are an ever-evolving science. So every time we do this, we're going to look for the most accurate and up-to-date information so that we can most accurately present our greenhouse gas emissions for the city. Next. I'm bringing up this slide again because I wanted, we wanted to talk a little bit more about solid waste. Even though the GPC protocol is a very um extensive analysis, it does not look at avoided emissions. And when you recycle, you actually create avoided emissions. So we wanted to better understand our impact from recycling. I do want to note um that the analysis was included last week um as attachment for Bob Allen's Waste Services presentation. So we just wanted to revisit that analysis when we did the greenhouse gas um inventory update this week. Next. So when looking at waste, it's important to look at the full life cycle of a product. From a raw material to manufacturing to the transportation it goes through, to whether it's recycled, composted, or put in the landfill. So that recycling going back into the manufacturing process can have a huge opportunities for avoiding emission. And then the the product is either sent to the landfill or composted. When looking at the GPC protocol, it only looks at methane being released um from the landfill process. So it does not look at this full lifecycle analysis. So that's why we thought it was important to use the EPA war model to dive a little bit deeper um into our waste emissions. Next. And what we found was that in twenty nineteen, we avoided uh just under fifty six thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. So we wanted to see the impact of what if we increased our waste diversion. So we looked at two different scenarios. The first scenario um looked at eighty five percent diversion by twenty fifty. This is equivalent to about removing forty one thousand five hundred passenger vehicles from the road by that time. The second scenario um looked at ninety five percent diversion. And this is equivalent uh to removing just under forty four thousand passenger vehicles by twenty fifty. So overall, if you increased waste diversion, we can have a huge impact on our increase in our avoided emissions. Next slide. I'm not going to highlight um strategies to increase our waste diversion too much depth, as that was a main. Um effort of Bob Allen's Waste Services Update presentation last week. But I did want to bring up the Sustainability Plan Waste Strategies to highlight the work that has already been done and has been planned to be done. Moving forward to increase our waste diversion. Next slide. Uh before I end, I did want to highlight on this one piece of information that we did find. Uh when doing this analysis, we found that the city of Longmont only hauls about thirty three percent of the total waste um for the entire city. So if we want to work toward these waste diversion goals, uh we need to work with all haulers, not just the city, to achieve those greenhouse gas emission reductions. So um that is the end of my greenhouse gas inventory update, so I wanted to pause to see if there's any questions before moving on to the Climate Action Task Force.
Uh Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is just a quick one and it's more of an explanation. Um uh the protocol that Francie referred to um works really well if you're talking about taxing the carbon emissions. And allocating those taxes. And the reason that um I think it's important that we pull in the equity share of of the. Of the uh electricity that's generated and sold out of our area, which means somebody else would pay the the tax. So I just want to say that the greenhouse gases themselves and the other, the particulate emissions and and the volatile organic compounds. That are uh produced in the generation processes now do not leave the area. And so especially with respect to particulate, um we want to reduce that equity share of carbon-based generation as fast as we can. Because even though we wouldn't pay a tax on it, we're still breathing it. And uh I I thought that Francie's explanation of equity share was was really important. But uh I'm not sure we put it in concrete enough terms, so I thought I'd just add that in. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Uh Francie, thank you. I think that's a, that was a good presentation. Um so I um. I wonder what your stra- what the strategies are for working with the private haulers. I I think that graph made it very clear that since we only have thirty three percent of the waste diversion and the rest is largely um. Uh private haulers, we need to. Uh consider whether we want to, well, consider a strategy for how to work with them and what other cities have done uh in that regard. Do, do we have something like that?
Uh I can jump in on that. Um Councilmember Christensen, um you'll recall from the presentation last week from uh Bob Allen. Uh certainly one of the areas that um uh we will be returning to. Uh, certainly one of the areas that um uh we will be returning to uh council on is the universal uh recycling and composting ordinance. It is that type of action that um uh brings in all of the haulers within the city uh
Right.
into the uh the program. So that is how you would uh first and foremost start to look at that.
So how do um, when we, when we bring that back, which I'm, I'm in favor of, but I, I also want it to be fair to the haulers and a commercial thing, commercial enterprises, especially at a time when it's very difficult for them to begin with. But um, could you give us examples of other cities that have done this so that we have a little bit of clout when we're talking about this?
Uh, Councilmember Christensen, um, yes, that'll be part of the analysis and the evaluation that staff will do. And uh, we'll do some of that work before we uh return to you um
Okay.
with that type of uh opportunities and options.
Yeah. Um, can you also tell me, uh, I believe PACE works with individual businesses to make um hmm, to make their um recycling and um composting programs easier to manage? Is that correct?
I can, I can jump in there. Uh,
Okay.
uh, Councilmember Christensen and Mayor Bagley, members of council. Uh, yes, PACE does offer some rebates and financial support to businesses to get set up with composting and recycling services.
Okay.
Your question about other strategies that we're doing to support the commercial sector, that's really where um the sustainable business program comes into play. A- as yet, we're mostly focusing that on the business side itself, but really helping those businesses to become educated about what recycling and composting resources are out there and get them connected to some of those incentives like what PACE offers um to to help increase that that um portion of our waste.
Okay, that's great because I think a lot of restaurants and grocery stores and things like that that have a tremendous amount of uh compostable waste um would be happy to do this. But they uh, they don't have a huge margin. And they have to, it has to be something that they can do quickly and something they can do efficiently. And so if PACE helps them do that, that's, that's wonderful. Thanks.
All right, uh, Dr. Waters.
Well, Francie, can you go back to slide eight? And bring it up. So um, you made the comment that that I I I I'm looking at total emission reductions from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen. Uh, you made a reference to, or you referred to several of factors that would lead to the, to the reduction. One of those being oil and gas. Could you just talk a little bit more about that? Is that, is this a reflection of, well, just uh, give us more information on what's the reduction of oil and gas that accounts for um uh that difference, that reduction?
Yeah, uh, um, Councilmember Waters, a member of city council, I would be happy to. Um, in, when we did our twenty sixteen greenhouse gas inventory, I believe there were eight open wells within the city. And when we did the twenty nineteen, there were only two open wells. Uh, when wells are open, they do release uh methane into the environment. So by closing those wells and going from eight to two, we did see a decrease in emissions from that process.
Yeah, Rata Maker, would you, can you account for that by the, as a result of the agreement we signed, the contract we signed?
Councilmember Waters, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure I would go that far at this point. I I uh, I understand what you're uh looking at. But as I look at that particular chart, it appears to me, one of the biggest offsets is how we're accounting for our share of the air travel. Um, so um, to, you know, I I rely on Francie and the work that she's doing to to analyze that. I um, you know, the agreement that we did, um, I assume what you're referring to is the one with top and and and
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I'm referring to. If we have, what was, so say more than about air travel. How does that relate to that, those eight closed wells?
Uh, Councilmember Waters, I believe what um Dale was referring to is that even going from eight to two wells, I I believe our well impact from wells um was less than um less than point one percent. So even when it in, from two wells and when it was one, eight wells, it was still less than one percent. So that eight percent total reduction that we are getting is probably, is not happening because of the, the well closure. It's more due to changes in methodology. And one of the biggest impacts is that the Denver airport has changed how they uh allocate emissions to different communities. So improving methodologies probably had the larger impact than activity in the past three years.
Uh, so that, so okay, then it begs the question of our total emissions. Uh, how much, what percentage of total emission you attribute to oil and gas in two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen? Not much, apparently.
Uh, not, not much. I don't have twenty sixteen numbers available, um, Councilmember Waters, but
Well, they were on the slide. They were
The twenty nineteen were point zero six percent, I believe.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's go on with the next half of the presentation. Please.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Bagley and members of council for your questions. Um, the next presentation will be the evaluation of the Climate Action Task Force recommendations, which was requested by city council on August twenty-fifth. Next slide. So I know there's a lot of text and I'm not expecting to you to read all of this. But the reason I'm bringing this all up is because I wanted to remind city council of the breadth and scope of the twenty-seven Climate Action Task Force recommendations. To develop a list of how the recommendations should be implemented, staff used a criteria and waiting scenario that I will detail over the next couple of slides, combined with staff modifications that are detailed in the packet. Next slide. To evaluate the recommendations, staff looked at seven different criteria, criteria ranging from cost to community impact and board feedback. The sustainability team um developed a series of questions and a way um, uh, questions and calculations for each of these criteria and then worked with staff across the different departments to rate each of the recommendations for each of these criteria and develop a final score. Once that final score was developed, the recommendations were applied to seven different waiting scenarios, including a waiting scenario recommended by the Sustainability Advisory Board. Staff specifically focused on waiting scenarios that emphasize greenhouse gas reduction and effectively engaging the community to influence change. Next slide. So I know there's a very colorful image with a lot of small texts. The reason I am bringing that up is because I want to walk through how we use the waiting scenario process. So if you look up in the top right cor- corner, that is three of our seven different waiting scenarios. As you move down the list, the recommendations are ranked as one or highlighted in green or to twenty-seven as highlighted in red. I do want to note that this ranking doesn't mean you need to do uh recommendations ranked one first and then recommendations ranked two second next and then down the list. Um, this was just a tool combined with staff modifications to help staff determine when the recommendations should be implemented. So when doing this, one of the key things we found is that no matter, for most of the recommendations across the seven different waiting scenarios, they did not shift significantly in how they were ranked. Um, for those that did shouldn't shift significantly is only for maybe one or two scenarios and not all seven. So this helps staff separate the recommendations into three different categories. Near term, so the ones highlighted in green, so they should be implemented over the next two years. Midterm highlighted in yellow, the four years after that, and then three that should be monitored over time. The last thing I want to highlight on this slide is that those that were highlighted in red, so ranked lower for the different waiting scenarios, staff initially thought this might mean that they'd be long-term recommendations. But instead, we realized that this, this just indicated a need for more significant staff modifications to determine the implementation timeline. So on the next slide, I'm going to highlight one of our most extensive modifications. Next. So this is for the water conservation recommendation. This recommendation was consistently ranked last across the different waiting scenarios. The Climate Action Task Force called for a thirty-five to forty percent reduction in overall water consumption by twenty twenty-five. In the proposed staff modification that's detailed in the packet, staff is instead recommending that we continue with current water conservation and drought management efforts, which includes a recent um effort to better integrate water efficiency and land use planning until twenty twenty-four for the next water efficiency master plan update. At that time, um, staff should evaluate a more aggressive water con- conservation goal and then bring the results to city council to make a decision on how to pursue a um a more aggressive water conservation goal at that time. I do want to highlight that, again, this is one of the most extensive modifications. And other modifications for recommendations could be as minimal as just adjusting the timeline slightly. Next slide. I wanted to next highlight the twelve proposed near-term recommendations. The ones that are highlighted in yellow at the top are already budgeted for twenty twenty-one. The next highlighted in red are budgeted for twenty twenty-one but may need additional funding um to meet the goals of the recommendation in future years. The one, the two that are highlighted in purple, staff applied for Boulder County Sustainability Tax Funding to help initiate these efforts in twenty twenty-one. Then the two that are unhighlighted still need additional analysis to determine all budget needs. Next. So our request to city council this evening is to approve staff's recommendations of proposed near-term, midterm, and monitor over time actions, including the proposed modifications to the recommendations and direct staff to continue working on these efforts as well as integrate this work into the next sustainability plan in the vision long run. So um, update. So I'm going to pause at, on this slide to see if there are any questions about this direction or the analysis that I detailed. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, I hope we'll have some other questions. Um, but uh, I do want to say that uh, I went over this extensively with Francie and team uh last week and I'm really satisfied with the work that they've done. Um, and so I am going to move that the council adopts uh the plans, uh, the staff's implementation plan for the Climate Action Task Force recommendations uh as it stands.
Second.
I really don't know why that keeps happening, but uh, any further objection or debate? Uh, Councilmember Waters?
I do objection or debate. I do, I I I have a question, but it's not specifically related to the motion. It is related to the Just Transition Committee recommendations.
Well, let, let's vote, let's vote on this quick and then let's go ahead and do that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Councilmember Martin. I know that was important to you. Uh, Dr. Waters?
Um, yeah, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to move on to the next topic without having a chance to ask the question. Um, uh, staff brought to us some questions when we saw these recommendations uh back in the summer. And um, and we tried, we got into some discussion that evening. Uh, it didn't go very far. We were asked then to respond in writing to questions. Um, and then we were asked several times, prodded several times uh to respond to those questions. I I've never seen uh, what happened to those. We responded, I'm not certain who all responded or what, what, what happened to the responses. Um, could we just get some idea of what, what that input, where that input went and what anybody did with it?
Yeah, go ahead, Annie. I'm sorry. Staff usually just jumps in.
Councilmember Waters, I believe that information was provided in your August twenty-fifth packet when we brought that back um to
Well, Annie, I saw, I saw uh with our responses. But I I didn't have, you didn't have to show me my responses back. I know what I submitted. And I had a chance to see the several other council members responded. What, but that, what, so why were we asked if, if nobody did anything with what we said or what the input was?
Um, Councilmember Waters, I think we wa- walked through that whole process in the presentation based on the information that you provided. And I think what we heard from that, we didn't get any feedback, but what we were proposing was to move forward with the Climate Action Task Force um checklist, and there didn't seem to be any concern about that. And Francie could go into more detail about that checklist, but um, that was the feedback that I believe we got at that meeting.
All right, I, that's, I, I recall getting the loop, loop getting closer, that's probably on me.
I move that we recognize that that's on Dr. Waters. Do I have a second? No, just kidding. All right, Councilmember Peck. Or were you seconding my motion? Okay, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, we did do that, uh, and I think maybe the, the piece that's, that might be left out is, is that each of the individual uh recommendations uh that Ms. Jaffe showed us, uh, if you got down into the weeds with them, they all contained uh social equity constraints within the recommendation that are the starting point for what uh the teams that are going to implement them uh, uh, will take into account. So we would have, and Dale's nodding here. I'm glad, I'm glad we're on the same track, Dale. Um, is the, the issue would be is if the um the reviewing staff in, in each particular case came up with uh reasons why they, they could not equitably address these recommendations, then I would expect them to come back to us as some kind of a just transition exception. Um, but so far, at, you know, in most of these, the first year, there's make more plans. So uh, we can expect uh, maybe to hear about issues with a just transition later next year. But we're um, we're, they're satisfied with they're being, that they're being addressed in the separate recommendations now.
Councilmember Peck.
I would just like to thank uh the whole task force for all the work they've done on this. I know as we go through each segment of all these recommendations, we're going to be hitting on the body of work. So um, everybody that was involved with that, I thank you.
All right, thank you very much, staff. Annie, good job. We appreciate it. All right, can I have my screen back? All right, let's go on. Let's actually, let's just take a three-minute break before we start the solar feasibility study. Is that okay? All right, be back in, let's let three to five. All right, bye. Little bit of trivia as we're waiting. Do you guys know how many calories in a pickle? None?
Five.
Gerkins or dill?
Oh, Councilmember Peck for the win. Zero or ten, depending on the answer, right, Joe? All right, looks like we're all back. So let's go ahead and turn the time over to our staff. Tim, are you up for the solar feasibility study?
Yes, I am. Can everybody hear me? Excellent. So good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members. My name is Tim Ellis. I'm the Renewable Energy Strategy Manager in the Energy Strategies and Solutions Group at LPC. I'm here tonight with Dan Shippey, who's Control Systems Electrician in Public Works and Natural Resources. And we're going to present the results of a solar feasibility study that was completed a few months ago. Next slide, please. Oh, we didn't have this slides up. Second slide. Here we go. Thank you. So here's our agenda for the presentation. First, we're going to review the purpose and methodology of the study. Then we're going to go over the parameters we used for facility selection. And next, we'll give an overview of each of the eight sites, final sites selected. And finally, we're going to cover how the study fits in with the city's plans and goals and what the next steps will be. Next slide, please. So as you know, the Longmont Sustainability Plan provides a roadmap for social, environmental and economic progress for the city. The solar feasibility study addresses the plan's actions to expand the use of renewable energy technologies to improve environmental quality, to provide a resilient energy supply and to realize any economic benefits of projects. This study wasn't intended to be, was not intended to be a community-wide evaluation of commercial or residential opportunities. It was really focused on city and county-owned facilities. We initially considered thirty-one sites throughout the city, all but one being city-owned, one was county-owned. And we evaluated the sites with certain selection parameters with the intent of selecting the top eight sites that best align with those parameters. I'll cover the parameters in the next slide. We then ran the eight slides through our Sustainability Evaluation System and Lifecycle Cost Evaluation Tools. And these tools allowed us to rate the sites in comparison to each other regarding the city's sustainability goals and relative life cycle costs of each project. And we have the table showing the results in a couple of slides. Next slide, please. So here are the selection parameters that we use to evaluate the thirty-one sites and pare down the list to the top eight. These parameters help us rate projects that would have the lowest cost to build and connect to the grid and that would also follow the city's environmental and planning goals. So they include how close the solar array would be to existing city electric infrastructure, the project's capability to offset existing electric load, and this is all behind the meter load. Also, what are the existing environmental conditions and would the project have any significant environmental impacts? And are there any future land use, planned future land uses that would preclude the project? And finally, are there any other physical site constraints that would inhibit project construction? Again, this goal, the goal of, of this step was to narrow down that list of thirty-one to the top eight best-suited sites for solar development. Next slide, please. So this table lists the final eight sites ranked by the Sustainability and Lifecycle Cost Tools as they relate to each other. The list shows the preliminary estimated cost of each project, the annual energy production in kilowatt-hours and the expected greenhouse reductions for each project. And next, Dan's going to present a, a, a few slides that are overviews of each of the eight sites that we selected. So please go ahead, Dan.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, Mayor Bagley and members of city council. As Tim mentioned, there are eight sites that I'll discuss in more detail. They consist of a wide variety of system types as well. It's important to note, however, that the size of the systems in the study were limited to the available building area and regulations set forth by Plat River Power and for behind-the-meter installations as well as the city's municipal code so that they generate no more than one hundred and twenty percent of the previous year's electrical consumption of the service they're serving. The primary reason for sites being highest on the list is due to the solar readiness of the location. An example, ease of interconnection and the size of the array. There are two potential installations that take place at Centennial Pool. So there'll be one slide that depicts both of those systems. Next slide, please. Um, here we have sites one and two. Site one is the newly constructed Renewable Natural Gas Waste Services Building on South Martin Street. The site consists of a rooftop system that is two hundred and forty watt, two hundred and forty-one kilowatts that would completely offset the building's electrical usage. During construction, there was foresight to install extra conduits between the building and the electrical service in anticipation of a potential future solar installation. Site two is the newly constructed maintenance office building at the wastewater treatment plant. This system is designed at eighty kilowatts and would offset roughly two percent of the wastewater treatment plant's electrical load utilizing available space on both the southern and western roof slopes. Next slide, please. Sites three and four next. Site three is the pavilion at Roosevelt Park and is sized at eighty-seven kilowatts. This has great exposure to the public and will offset roughly sixty-four percent of the electrical load from the ice rigs, compressor and lighting. Site five is a rooftop mount system on building seven of Public Works O and M Vehicle Storage on Airport Road. This system would produce two hundred and eighty-nine kilowatts and has a great roof for solar that would allow for a complete offset of that entire campus's electrical consumption. The location of interconnection, however, is not directly adjacent to the building where the system would be installed. So it would involve more work to connect to the grid. Next slide, please. Here we have sites four and six. Both are located at Centennial Pool. Site four is a ground mount, which is designed at sixty-seven kilowatts and would take the place of the existing solar hot water system, which has been inoperative for years. The existing underground path between the building and the array location can be utilized for electrical conductors and will bring operational solar energy back to the pool facility. Site six is a parking structure over the parking lot of Centennial Pool. The Centennial Pool parking lot design would incorporate a structure for solar canopies over the parking lot in a design at two hundred and forty kilowatts. The combination of these two systems, the ground mount for site four and the covered parking site six will offset roughly eighty-five percent of the facility's electrical consumption. Next slide, please. Finally, here we have sites seven and eight. Site seven is the Nelson Planters Water Treatment Plant Four Bay Body of Water that utilizes an innovative technology called flotovoltaics, meaning the array floats. It's an eight hundred and fifty-three kilowatt installation that would bring, or that would be the second of its kind in Colorado. The solar arrays are installed on floating module racking systems utilizing water area instead of land. These systems have been installed throughout Europe and Asia and are growing in popularity in the U.S. The system would completely offset the electrical consumption of the water treatment plant and because of its modular design can be easily added on to in the future. Site eight is a one hundred and thirty-eight kilowatt design installed over the wastewater treatment plant's primary clarifier covers. It would be the most challenging design as engineering and racking fabrication would be a one-off task. The major benefit of this system is the amount of energy it would offset from the wastewater treatment plant's facility at roughly six percent. Thanks for your time and I'll hand it back over to Tim where he can talk about the study findings and the next steps.
Thanks, Dan. So where does this study fit into the city's goals and plans? And in twenty eighteen, the city of Longmont committed to reach a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. The next year, the city declared a climate emergency with the intent to take actions to address the climate crisis. Uh, this, the solar feasibility study demonstrates the city's commitment to clean energy analysis and planning. Um, and the city now has a list of the eight most viable solar installation sites on city-owned facilities. There are also plans and studies underway by our wholesale provider, Platt River Power Authority, that together with this study will help us determine ways to reach a hundred percent renewable energy. Platt River has recently finalized its next integrated resource plan that offers resource options that provide safe, reliable and cost-effective electricity for its member cities for the next twenty, ten to twenty years. Um, and the plan moves us towards our renewable energy and carbon goals. But even more pertinent to this solar study is a separate study that Platt River is performing with the member cities as partners. It's a distributed energy resource study that is analyzing the, the future of these resources in our region, which solar is going to be a very important component. The study will provide us with a model to evaluate DER project cost-effectiveness and help us determine which projects and programs make the most sense for the city. We're also exploring various grants and other funding opportunities that can provide financial support to our solar projects in the future. These include grant off, grants offered by the American Public Power Association, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, and the U.S. Department of, of Energy. Solar projects, when they're combined with innovative processes or technologies that supports, both support city goals and our grid, provide grid flexibility or other energy efficiency opportunities can qualify for pretty substantial funds to offset city budget spending. Um, one example of these efforts is the city's recent application for a DOLA grant to help, help fund upgraded air raiders at our wastewater treatment plant. This, this grant application also includes the solar project that Dan covered in as site two earlier in the presentation, and it also pairs it with battery storage at the plant's office building. Uh, we should be finding out the results of this application by early next year. So finally, as these plans and studies and funding opportunities proceed, the solar projects that were analyzed and designed as part of this solar feasibility study are poised to, to quickly ramp up and support achieving our city needs and goals. Next slide, please. That's it. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, I, I got it. I got it. Thank you. I don't know what, I have no idea why my mute keeps not working. But what I, my question is simply, so we get our energy from Platt River. And Platt River, this is what they do. They, they build, uh, solar, wind, uh, and other power-producing, uh, infrastructure. Now we are looking at doing it ourselves. My question is, why? I understand the symbolic gesture, but theoretically, by being part of the PRPA co-op, aren't they doing it anyway? I mean, Marcia's shaking her head, but I would go this, I would say this as a board director. I'm sorry, Marcia. So my, my, my concern is, my concern is that we are going to be doing something that our power provider is doing and we're going to be doing it at a more expensive cost and not focusing on those things that we do best. So what is, what is it going to cost us compared to PRPA?
Well, you're right. The utilities, large utility scale renewable energy is the cheapest renewable energy right now. But, but the fact remains that there is, there are many local efforts for renewable energy that are going on as we speak. There is also a, and we are exploring local renewable energy opportunities with, with Platt River. But there are, beyond that, there are, there are opportunities that are, are cost-effective depending on what the, the, the benefits that they will provide to the city. And that's why we're starting off this process, applying for grants to see And that's why we're starting off this process, applying for grants to see how it all works, how it all fits in, how it can be, solar can be paired with battery to provide other grid resource flexibility and also accomplish our renewable energy goals. So there, I think there are multiple reasons to look at local opportunities as well as the broader Flat River opportunities, which are usually outside of our local locality. And another one of which is supporting local business and local installation. So I think there are other benefits that are beyond the simple, what is the cost of this solar kilowatt hour that this this project and other projects like it can provide. And I'll let Dale and Dave step in because I'm sure they have some other things to add to that.
Just as we go forward, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep pushing on that because my question is when we say, well, other people are doing. I don't see any math or hard numbers there. But so I mean, Mike, again, that question will persist. So Councilmember Christensen?
I'm sure Councilwoman Martin will have a better a more articulate answer, but there really isn't a an either or thing going on here. There are a lot of people who have solar installed on their house and they're feeding energy back into our grid. This is part of that. And also there's less energy, I think, lost in transmission because there isn't transmission. It's directly from the building to the building. So there, there's a need for exploring all these possibilities. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to demonstrate and make our buildings more efficient, especially our public buildings. So I thank you for the presentation and I'm, I'm really happy to see that we've that we're moving forward to this and that we can encourage other commercial buildings to do this. I remember when I was working at CU, our building used a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in utilities a year. That was outrageous, outrageous, when it had a big flat roof. You know, we just need to be more efficient in every area that we're doing and use the facilities we have. And I think this is a terrific study.
Councilwoman Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would like to add to that and Councilmember Christensen made some very good points. First of all, Platt River Power Authority is aware that to reach the goals that they are honestly struggling with, that we have set them, that distributed energy resources are necessary by the cities. They have a distributed energy resource task force. Our own David Hornbacker is the chair of the Distributed Energy Resource Task Force, I do believe. And the immediate good of solarization in Longmont is peak shaving. If you can hearken back, it was a long time ago now. It really feels like a long time ago. But when we saw a a presentation from PRPA on our electric rates, what we found was that because we have the least predictable demand and the and the highest peak demand of the four cities, that we are paying the highest of demand charge component of our wholesale electricity rates. So if the city by offsetting the electric, the demand for some of our biggest buildings can shave that peak even a little bit, everybody who pays electric rates can benefit with it. Now, I'm not sure whether you know, these initial study projects are going to have a huge effect on that. But eventually, solarization as a distributed energy resource, especially with some behind the substation meter battery storage is going to be, is going to do a real good job of making us a better PRPA customer and getting us more favorable rates. So I I really don't agree that honestly, that that this project goes against PRPA's goals in any way at all. They're happy to have us doing this.
Okay, so first of all, your comment of Councilwoman Martin of I do not agree. I was only asking a question. Not making a statement. So there's nothing to agree or disagree with.
Well, it sounded like you thought we were.
No, no, I'm asking the question of like, for example, you use the term it will do or will do a real good job. Adjectives to describe renewable energy costs, reliability and and sustainability. I just want to know numbers, meaning the organic contract, the contract that was originally signed back by the four cities ten thousand years ago. I don't know how long ago it was signed. But the originally, we all agreed that we would not do solar power. We all agreed that we would not produce our own, our own power and we would rely on PRPA because it's not going to do us any good to buy our power from somebody else, right? So what happened is we changed that in order to allow our individual citizens who wanted to provide their own south solar that they'd be able to do that. Now the city's doing that, right? Which obviously we, I mean, at least I think we provide you look at other residences, et cetera, and commercial buildings. We we consume quite a bit of power. We have, we we do things with our buildings that consume power. I'm just saying before we do that, what that I did not see in the feasibility study is a number, meaning how much, how much is it going to cost us? Meaning compared to purchasing the energy, energy from PRPA? And what, what impact will it have on the overall grid if Fort Collins, Estes Park, Loveland and Longmont all start producing our own power? My only, the question I'm raising is what type of strain will it create on the system? And as we're working forward with PRPA, I'm not advocating for or against. I'm just saying in the feasibility study, I still don't know how feasible it is. Meaning it's technically feasible, but is it, what I don't see is are numbers that say, well, we should do it. Because does it impact the health of PRPA? Does it actually, by doing this, so we can actually do more harm than good towards our overall goal of hitting one hundred percent carbon-free energy by twenty thirty? And how much is it going to cost us? That's all I'm saying. I I will be the first person to champion this. I'm just saying, I I I'm just missing a key piece of information. That's it. I don't want to hear words like it'll be good or it's, I I just want a number. Meaning how's it going to impact things? And I think that's a good thing to know before we launch in to put in a bunch of so solar all over town and and detracting and taking away from our role currently in purchasing power from PRPA. That's it.
Well, so the only thing, the only piece of that that I can't answer is the number, which is is how long does it take for these stellar installations to pay for themselves in terms of the rate, the the electricity that that we don't pay PRPA for? But theoretically, in terms of the the grid design, I think it's important to get out there that this is something that PRPA expects the cities to do and that PRPA has a task force working on how it should be done.
And my understanding is that 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 task force is looking at ways to streamline the process. What this is doing is producing power. Maybe for, for example, I mean, PRPA has solar fields, just, just thirty miles to the north. And they can produce it the same way we can. And a lot of these, and I'm not seeing like putting, I mean, we're not talking about just putting solar on our buildings. I was showing, I was seeing options of where to build solar, solar plants here in town. And so I understand if we're putting them on our buildings, you know, I'd still have my same concerns, but we're talking about competing with PRPA. And that, and again, the number, the number, I just want, I mean, we don't have it now. I'm just saying, moving forward as we're discussing this, I understand that I don't know as much technically about anybody else on the screen here, right? I understand that technologically, I trust you that it's possible to be done. Theoretically, it's possible. I get that. I just want a number. So but we're not going to get that tonight. So I'm just warning people that I'm going to keep asking for the number. That's it. Unless you have a number, Dale, you're biting your finger. You got a number?
I do.
All right, let's have the number then.
I I don't have the number for for the entire issue. I
All right, get out of here, Dale.
I I would invite Director Hornbacker to weigh in. I think he is on that task force working on the distributed energy strategy for Platt River. What I did want to let the council know is Dan and and Tim referred to a grant application that we put in with DOLA just last week and you of us were part of that presentation. We've got some initial reaction back from DOLA already. I believe we are going to get awarded. We requested seven hundred and fifty thousand for a one million dollar project that involved more efficient blowers as well as the solar array and the battery storage. You know, that that's the exact type of project that I believe we need to get involved with to understand battery storage, to understand how to leverage a solar array effectively at a site. And so good news is in that particular case, I believe we are going to get a substantial grant award from from DOLA. I don't think we've got the formal notice here. I I'm getting it through other, other sources. But good news is, the number I do have is I think we're going to get about six hundred and seventy-five thousand from DOLA and towards that million-dollar project.
All right, Dave, got something to say?
Yeah, if I could just add to the conversation and I, Mayor Bagley and members of City Council, I hear what you're saying there and certainly as we do, you know, future presentations, make sure we have some of those actual dollar figures in so you can sort of compare it to what is it like versus doing it in bulk up with Platt River at other sites? But I think, you know, sometimes we look at it from two benefits. One, as a consumer to just offset your use and how does that compare to electric bill? But I think a lot of our discussion is more is the benefit as a community. How does this really help us? So the solar feasibility study is really a first step and I would call preparedness. Should grants be available, especially with the next administration? We want to be well-positioned. If there are money that's available for this type of work, we would have information that we could present and be competitive in that environment. The next, really four elements. So that was the first element. Second element is with our twenty thirty goal of a hundred percent renewable, one of the challenges is really going to be that last ten percent that we're going to try and achieve and because that is the highest variable and the highest cost or can be. And so I think that's where one of our roles as a member of Platt River is that we as a community also look to see what we can do with how we consume energy and how we generate energy to really help get to that a hundred percent energy goal. And one of those strategies is that Distributed Energy Resource Committee, which is currently convened with Platt River and different members of our, our other member communities. And in that, that's looking at the strategies of how these different distributed energy resources can create that environment to get to the hundred percent renewable mark. And so as we get that information out, we need to educate ourselves further on how we can apply some of those tools. And to Dale's point, bringing in a battery here into one of our facilities is an excellent opportunity to start to see how we can integrate that on a broader scale. And then the last point I want to make is electrification. As we start to see more electrification, just the advent of electric cars and then as we move towards more, you know, home energy uses that are electric versus natural gas fire, that is going to create an increased demand on an existing electric distribution system. So think of that system as a highway. And you just are now adding a third more population, you know, a half more, maybe you're doubling it. At some point, that that highway gets constrained and you either need to rebuild it or you need to do strategies to reduce pressure. And in the highway system, you're talking about you know, different types of transportation means and carpooling and buses and the rail that we talked about to really move things around but offload it on the dis electric distribution system. It's really how, how and where can we store energy? How and where can we generate it, even if it's in smaller bits, but in meaningful locations to help reduce the impact to that electric system to be able to deliver? So that's looking a little bit more turn, long-term. But near-term, we do have to look at it through the lens of the cost and benefit. And that's something that also, when we complete the strategy document for Distributed Energy Resources, we'll have more to work off of.
And I, I, again, I hear you and we're going to spend a lot of time talking about this topic. I have no doubt of that. You know, but still, as great as that sounded, Dave, phenomenal. I still don't hear another.
Back to the basics.
So I just, I mean, and again, I'm only raising it again because I do not want to spend a lot of time and effort in order, and then we do something and it detracts from our overall goal. If if, I mean, just building solar right now at PRPA, as you know, we can, we can buy all the solar we want. You know, I mean, but but that's not going to solve our problem or get us to the finish line on our goal. So I just don't want to have our city staff do a bunch of I don't, I don't want it to do a bunch of, you know, construction of solar panels only not to have it make a difference. And so I'm really asking the question of, is it going to make a difference? And so again, we don't have an answer right now, but I would like one as we, as we continue to talk about this. All right. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Staff, what else do you have on this topic? All right, can we go on to the building energy benchmark update then? All right, let's go on. Building energy benchmarking update. Welcome, Debbie. We see you.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Mayor Bagley and members of City Council and I'm ready to show a presentation. Thank you. All right, my name is Debbie Seidman and I work for Longmont Power Communications. I'm an engineer and project manager by background. I currently work in the Energy Strategies and Solutions Group. I did introduce building energy benchmarking to City Council back in May, but I am here to provide an update on what we have accomplished in twenty thirty. And I do want to clarify, there's no action today for City Council. This presentation is just to provide information and update. Next slide, please. For the agenda today is I will provide a, I'll reintroduce benchmarking. I'll give you information about a demonstration project that we held in twenty twenty and provide information about a larger voluntary program that we plan to move to in twenty twenty-one. A next slide, please. Next click, thank you. So again, as a refresher, benchmarking in general is a comparison related to a, relative to a baseline or an average. I'm in this case specifically, benchmarking is rating of energy use relative to other buildings in a similar region. Now everyone is familiar with fuel efficiency of vehicles and miles per gallon. So similarly, a building can get an energy score. Here's an example of a building with a score of seventy-one on a scale of one to one hundred where fifty is average greater than fifty is a greater than average. And then next click. Please. And in doing this, we use an EPA software and receive an energy star score. The intent is to make building owners aware of their energy use and then to take additional action to improve their score. And this is the adage, the old adage, you can't manage what you don't measure. A next slide, please. Again, as a reminder, nationally, there are thirty-four cities that currently have a building energy benchmarking ordinance. Ordinance, there are also three states that have a requirement. Locally in Colorado, Fort Collins, Denver and Boulder all have an ordinance. Next slide, please. So in twenty twenty, we we released and managed a demonstration project with select buildings in the city, twenty thousand square feet or greater. And these were commercial or industrial buildings. We recruited buildings to participate in the program and then next slide or next click. And then once we had recruited building owners and property managers to participate, we provided some in-depth training. some in-depth training, instructions, and one-on-one assistance. The program was really designed to help us gain a better understanding of how the software works with the EPA, and how useful it is, how beneficial it is to both the city and the customers. Next slide, please. So we did recruit 10 commercial buildings to participate, and a subset of those are shown here. One is the UC Health Long speak Hospital. This is a relatively new and large facility in Longmont. Next slide, please. The school district participated with two buildings. Next slide, please. Honda North America Data Center participated. Next slide, please. Circle Graphics, a large manufacturing company, participated, as well as the First Bank Building on North Main. There are also some additional large retail buildings that participated, and everyone was really a good partner. They were all really good to work with. Next slide, please. So how did we proceed with the demonstration project? Again, we use an EPA software, and the building owner is required to self-report their own information. They input information such as building square footage and type of building, is it a school, is it an office building, is it a hospital? They also input 12 months of electrical energy and natural gas consumption. And then, out of that, they receive a score. Again, here's an example of a building receiving a score of 60, and this is again on a scale of 1 to 100. Also, like to explain what, what factors affect this score, so that's how efficient your building envelope might be. So how good your windows are, insulation type, ceiling around the windows, maybe the number of computers in use in the building. And also, I want to emphasize again, the software itself does not save energy. This is a tool to help you see how your building is doing. You can look at it year over year. And the intent is that regardless of what your score is, we would hope that building owners would want to take action to improve their score. And if building owners want to do this, Longmont Power Communication has many ways that we can help them understand what programs, what projects could be done, and how they could get rebates, et cetera. Next slide, please. So, once our building owners and property managers benchmark their building, we did hire a, a third-party consultant to look at the input and output and make sure things were being done well. And a, an output of this step was that we actually got a little, a lot of interaction with our customers, and we got a lot of good feedback informally as to what they thought was beneficial, or maybe what could be done better, better in the future. Next click, please. We also, as I mentioned, had some formal and informal customer feedback. There really was good personal interaction, and customers came away with the importance of wanting to do more. Next slide, please. So here's the results of the 10 commercial buildings that participated. And again, the building is benchmarked against a building with a similar use. So it's an average for that type of building. Schools are benchmarked against other buildings, office buildings, grocery stores are benchmarked against other grocery stores, et cetera. And again, this is in a climate region, so that helps to weather, to normalize the weather data and the impact. Next slide, please. Now, I keep emphasizing this is a tool. The city of Longmont is not, is not really focused on what the score is, only on that a building might want to make improvements. Regardless of, a building has a score of 75 or greater, they are eligible to become an Energy Star certified building. And two of the participants in the program choose, chose to move forward and actually are working on certifying their buildings, and that's a commercial building and one of the schools. So that's, that's kind of a plus. Some of these buildings plan to continue benchmarking their buildings in the future. Also, a couple of these large commercial and retail companies had benchmarked and then stopped, and now they're, they're going to continue doing it again in the future, both with some local buildings and other buildings at other locations. And if you receive an Energy Star certification, you receive a sticker, so it's shown here that you can put in your, your window. Next slide, please. So we also benchmarked 10 municipal buildings. I worked on those. And I worked with facilities management in the city, and I worked with many department managers located at various buildings throughout the city to obtain the information I needed to input into the software. I appreciate their help. Next slide, please. So here's results from the municipal buildings. And as an example, we have a score of 60 for the Development Services Center, and this was interesting. I, that's an old building. It's actually three buildings that are combined together. And I was surprised, considering that's an older building, that it had such a good score. I assumed it, it just wouldn't have. I just, in general, the newer buildings tend to score higher. But in researching that, I discovered that there was a major effort done, a major project in 2007, to add insulation values to the walls and the roofs, and therefore, we've seen the benefit of that, and that building actually has a relatively good score. Also, I'll show that not all building types can receive a score. However, all building, all buildings can receive an energy use number shown in the second column. You don't really need to focus on that. And over time, every four years, the EPA does building surveys and adds more building types that have a baseline that can be benchmarked against. Next slide, please. So what are some benefits to the program? Well, with our voluntary programs that we're doing, the demonstration that I just discussed, and a voluntary program that I will introduce, with these initial programs, we can provide a lot of really good education and support with our customers. And then, in general, benchmarking really can be a good tool to help get funding for future projects, and so resulting projects can help building owners save energy and costs. Also, this can be used to help market your space, kind of help to promote your, your performance of your building when you're looking at potential tenants and/or employees. Also, I'd like to mention that currently with the pandemic, there's, there's probably increased importance on saving costs, so this is another tool that over time, we hope, can help our building owners. Next slide, please. Now, as I mentioned, in 2021, we'd like to expand this program to all commercial buildings of the same size, 20,000 square feet and greater. We have approximately 280 buildings in Longmont of this size. And, you know, why this particular group of buildings? Well, these are our largest buildings. It's a small number of buildings, but a larger impact, because these are the buildings that, that are the largest energy consumers. Next slide, please. Also, additional benefits. This supports the City Council Resolution for 100% renewable energy by 2030. Cities that have participated in this program have seen a 2.4% savings for buildings that have participated, and that's the information coming out of the software. Also, this coordinates with other city programs, such as the Climate Action Task Force and Sustainability Plan. Also, you just saw results from the Climate Action Task Force, and benchmarking is listed on that list of priorities. Next slide, please. So, current actions and near-term actions. Again, we had a demonstration project in 2020. We're still consolidating feedback. We will move to this voluntary program in 2021. That will include expanded customer education and outreach, including a panel discussion with the Chamber of Commerce with some of our participants that were in the demonstration project, and then we do plan to come back to City Council and report our findings from 2021. Next slide. Thank you. Oh, you're on mute, Mayor Bagley.
Thank you, Debbie. That sounds very good. Thank you very much for that information. Look forward to 2021 and see what happens. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Debbie. This is a really, I think this is also an excellent program, because on our utility bill, we get a a graph of how much we are spending relative to last year. And that's very helpful, because sometimes you notice that, oh, I'm spending a great deal more on such and such. I wonder if I have a leak, say, in the water system, or if, I mean, it just helps you to evaluate how much you're actually spending and do do some repair, or at least schedule, plan, and budget for repair and upgrades. And that's very useful for, I think, everybody. I, it's not a mandatory program. It's just that I think a lot of businesses would like to be able to save money, and certainly, it's important for our city businesses, or city buildings to be able to see how perhaps inefficient they are, and how we can, over time, make them more efficient and save more energy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If I could add an example, you mentioned if you might have a leak. An example, not a building in Longmont. This is a large building downtown Denver, but I was told the story of a building that did benchmarking and saw they had very high energy use in the summer that they hadn't expected. They have a snowmelt system under their sidewalk, and they discovered it had been running in the summer. So, but now, you could also discover that looking at utility bills, but, but that's an outlier, but that is a positive story coming out of this. And this is also a tool that you can look at year over year. I know myself, our August use this year residential was higher than I'm used to, but we had to shut the windows and turn air conditioning on due to the fires, unfortunately. And typically, I'm not really an air conditioning user, so.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. All right, we're at the end. Do we have mayor and council comments, anybody? All right, great. I'll start by saying Merry Christmas. We'll meet again before then, but what the heck? All right, Carol, do you have anything?
Comments, Mayor, Council?
All right, Eugene even here? Oh, hi, Eugene.
Mayor, come on.
I don't, I don't know you're here.
No comments for you, Mayor.
All right, great. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, great. See you guys next week. We're adjourned.